And I'll call this meeting of the committee, the whole of the Board of Education to order at eight, at 5:33. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Rollins? Ms. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod and Connor who are in the back helping with the broadcast of our meeting tonight on channel 20. So, thank you guys for all your help with that. And if I don't say this often enough, I would also like to thank all of the members of the administrative team who give up another evening a week now, or a month, away from their families. So, thank you all for being here and for contributing to our meeting. So, um, I would just ask you, if you, Board members, if you'll hold your questions during presentations till the end. So, make little notes about questions so that we can get through the presentations. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the meeting minutes from our last meeting? If they're not, is there a consensus for us to approve those minutes? All right, okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to start out tonight with a discussion and presentation from Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bailey. On demolition.
Good evening. We just got some information for you to request about demolition and where we are with buildings. We'll start with Walker. Walker's flattened, it's seeded, it's managed.
It has grass, I drove by yesterday, there's grass on the dirt.
Yeah, so we have an update from the last time I drove by.
Okay.
It's getting grass, we're getting there.
Okay.
But I wouldn't expect anything for soccer until spring.
Okay.
So, Walker, um, that will, there's an IGA and ultimately that will go to the Rockford Park District, but it sounds like we have a little more work to do on our end before that actually occurs. Next, we have Thompson, White Swan, New Milford. Those are part of a, an IGA and they were part of the land swap for what we acquired for the new Cherry Valley. We have, I believe you have in front of you the same document that I have, which has some relevant dates and numbers. Thompson, uh, bid doc, our anticipated board date is 11/27 and that bid doc, or that actually went out today for bid. White Swan also went out today. And New Milford, we had some numbers for, but there is, at this point, no documentation to put the demolition of that building out to bid. We had looked at it once, but those numbers are outdated at this point. No, yeah, we're sorry.
So, this sheet, basically what we have here is the seven buildings above the green line. These are estimated costs that were provided. The two buildings in the green box would be Stiles and New Milford. New Milford was bid back in April and brought to the board and I believe at that time was decided not to move forward with demolition. In the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the abatement and demolition, those were the low bids for that project. And then, basically taking the remaining cost, which would be A and E fees and abatement and design fees, along with the other line, which is utilities, permit fees, and things like that that come along with the project. Had we went forward with that project, the total, the estimated total would be $484,213. If you look back up in the green box, that estimated project was at $671,979. So, we would've, had we moved forward at that time with these numbers, we would've been under budget, the estimated cost. In that total column, you'll see we have an estimated demolition cost of nine buildings at $4.4 million. The FMP demolition budget was set at $3.7 million. So, that's a difference of $627,000. As Wilson stated, the Whites, White Swan, Thompson, and New Milford, or excuse me, White Swan, Thompson, and Cherry Valley went out to bid today. I think we're at a great bidding season here. Contractors are coming out of their construction season, looking for new book coming in to next summer. So, we may see some advantageous pricing at that time. We anticipate bringing that to the board in the end of November for approval to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry. At the time, the seven above the line were the buildings that were part of the original FMP, Facilities Master Plan, to be demoed. New Milford was not part of that, was not a building at that, at that time.
Okay, questions? Ms. McCulloch.
So, what's left on Walker?
Walker, it's just a matter of turning over the Phase One environmental and...
I don't know what that means.
That is, basically, doing tests of the site to make sure there's not any underground storage systems and things like that, that when we turn that over to the Park District, they're not taking on an environmental hazard.
You don't do that before we put seed down?
I believe, I'm sure that was all, I'm sure that was done prior to demolition.
Okay. The other question I had is, earlier on, you said Thompson, White Swan, and New Milford were part of the land swap. That is, I didn't remember New Milford being part of the land swap.
Correct, so the IGA that was approved, February 14th of 2017, New Milford was part of that land swap.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
Yeah.
Confirming, and so all those are with the Park District?
Correct.
All three of those properties and Cherry, but not Cherry Valley?
Correct. And at this point, there is, Cherry Valley will reside with us and we can do with that land what we'd like. The Cherry Valley site.
But we don't have an IGA with anybody?
Correct.
Could you do anything with that?
So, just...
Do we?
Yeah, just correct, we don't own the Cherry Valley site, I believe, once it's demolished.
Okay.
Yeah, once it's demolished, it's the village's.
This, that was part of the deal.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Holley?
I have a deal, I don't know that we have an IGA to that effect, but if that's what we're going to do with the land, that's, that's only another reason.
I think that was in writing, was it not? In the agreement?
It, it really, that's something we can easily handle.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that I, when we did that one, I very specifically remember that the village has the property.
So, the agreement was, I was involved in that process, that there was site, investment in the site for the new Cherry Valley Elementary School. And in exchange for that, the district agreed to demo Cherry Valley and turn that over to the village.
And so, the investment in the site that Cherry Valley gave us, what did they invest? This community just, and I know this is all somewhere, I just need to be remembered.
I think we should give the team time to come back, but essentially there were site improvements that were made. I think part of it had to do with access roads and things like that, but I don't remember off the top of my head, so I'll ask the team to bring that back to the board.
I'm going to ask this question, I'm really hesitant to ask it. None of these buildings would be big enough for any other possible, or in good enough shape for any other possible future use for the district, correct? That's correct, Mrs. Holley, okay. All right, all right, Mr. Rollins?
You might've said this, I might've just missed it, so why did we not proceed with the New Milford demolition if it came in below estimates?
My understanding of that was because it wasn't part of the original Facilities Master Plan. What we didn't realize, or what I didn't realize when that decision was being made, is that the IGA for the land swap actually specifically identified New Milford as being part of the turnover, the property turnover to the Park District. But because it wasn't included in the original budget of the FMP, my understanding was wait until the very end of the, of the Facilities Master Plan to see how much money was left over in order to include that, or in order to demo it. But that's not what the IGA provides for.
Mr. Segal?
And now that we're down to the end with Walker, can you tell us how close we hit, or came to budget?
I don't have the, the original estimate. What I've been told is we're approximately $100,000 under what the budget was. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to prove that at this point, but we'll definitely look into that.
Thank you. Mr. Connor, Mr. Connor, did you have figures in your head on the Walker demo and the cost from your previous committee duties?
But I remember the bid for the demo.
I'm lucky to have my head.
Okay. The fact that the demo of the building...
I'm not a part of it, so, yeah.
No, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Okay, all right. Ms. McCulloch?
So, when we look at the numbers, are we going to have enough access to be able to demolish New Milford? Or is that going to have to come out of reserves?
If the bids come in as New Milford did, which were well under the estimated cost, I believe we would have enough money to demolish New Milford. I, we will definitely have a better sense on November 13th when the bids for White Swan, Thompson, and Cherry Valley come in.
But are we also waiting then for the Nelson Kishwaki piece? Because that is part of the whole, make sure you have money for everything else, because we never included this in the master plan, the New Milford site.
So, Kishwaki is, is scheduled to go out to bid in late November. We're expecting to bring that to the board. I, on your list, you'll see December, I'm revising that, more than likely January. That is really our critical path demolition, because we actually have to turn that site over to the general contractor so they can do the site improvements and parking turnaround needed for the opening of Constance Lane.
The point I was making is that the money that the master plan had seeded for demolition included those two sites, but not New Milford. So, those will also have to be done before you can do New Milford. I'm just looking for affirmation on that.
I don't know that I can affirm that, Ms. McCulloch, only because you also, although you didn't allocate in the Facilities Master Plan, as a board, you authorized the demo, the demolition of New Milford through the IGA and set specific timeframes for it, which actually were well beyond that already. So, so it's, it's one that wasn't necessarily budgeted, but it's also a commitment that the board made. So, that's really up to you, if you, we're already past the timeframe, but if, I don't know that I can affirm that we will have the budgeted dollars that were set aside in the, in the Facilities Master Plan.
So, I guess it would be good to bring that to our attention, that this would supersede our original...
That's, that's what I've been trying to do.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo?
So, I know maybe water over the dam, but why was New Milford never part of the Facility Master, Master Plan? Does any, the New Milford, does anyone?
Yes, so Stiles and New Milford were not included because those schools had been closed previously. The eight on the top of the list were part of the 2013 Facilities Plan. And it was always the intent of the board at that point to revisit those two if dollars were available. But Stiles and New Milford had been closed by the previous administration and the focus of the Facilities Plan focused on these schools that were in there. And we had $4 million dedicated to this. The hope was that if we had the extra, extra dollars left over from that $4 million, we would prioritize Stiles and New Milford. So, it just came down to the timing of the Facilities Plan. And later in the process, the board asked that we, instead of cutting something out of the Facilities Plan, the board asked that we include Stiles and New Milford as a, if there's money left over, because it was sort of an oversight in terms of it being left over from previous administration.
And how long have they been closed?
Well, Stiles is still being used, we have a tenant there. And New Milford has been closed probably for six years? Eight years?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. No more questions?
Oh, one last thing. New Milford was being used pretty heavily for storage, so there was a reason why it was pushed off, because the administration was using that building for a purpose, so it was not abandoned.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, okay. We'll now move on to new business, Star Autism Support, Inc. Mr. Vosberg, no relation to Dr. Vosberg. Spell it for him. Okay.
I'm Brett Vosberg, I'm the program administrator for self-contained autism in the district. And I'm here to present for Star. So, what we... Yes, I may not be close.
All right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, when a student qualifies for special education services under autism, they can go two routes. They can go into a resource setting or a self-contained setting. The students who fall into the self-contained setting generally follow the path on the top. They'll go into the self-contained autism program. And then, once they reach middle and high school, they'll go into our program, Learning for Unique Students. If their needs can't be met in those two environments, they go into our therapeutic day schools. And right now, just in K through five, we have around 100 students that are impacted by that right now. And then, we have seven students, K through eight, in therapeutic day school. The problem that we're having is, I'm sorry, your slide skipped. Okay, so the problem that we have is, we have a revolving door with our teachers, teachers, our paraprofessionals, speech pathologists and social workers. They come into the program, there's a lack of training for the staff in the programs and they end up exiting the programs because of that. We have a hard time keeping staff, which helps the kids with routine and functional support. We lack that right now. The self-contained autism classroom began in 2014. I want to say it was four classrooms. And with the increased diagnosis and the need, it's grown to three early childhood classrooms, one at each. We have one at Byer, one at Fairview, and one at Sommerdale. We have seven classrooms currently allocated at the elementary level. Four at McIntosh and three at Spring Creek. Two classrooms at West Middle School and then three at Wilson Aspire. So, it's grown quite a bit in just four years. When the program originally started, the group of teachers did go through this training. They went through a year of it. Only three of those staff members are still with us in the program today. So, the staff that I have in these positions don't have any of the skills that they need to support the students in those programs. There, we use two curriculums in the program, Star and Unique. And when the Star comes, when they come out to train our teachers, they also work with the Unique curriculum to show them how to make it accessible to students with autism. What we've done in the past, an outside consultant came and worked with the teachers in the classroom. He went in, just did a classroom visit for a couple hours out of the day, then met with the teachers afterwards. It was pretty tough because there was no follow-through with any of that. There was no secondary meeting to see what had been done out of the suggestions that were set forth, and there was no follow-up with the teachers. The autism team was disbanded this year. We had eight staff members that were part of an autism team. Teachers in general ed or special ed setting would request them to come to the school to help with the students and get support. Over the last year, that team of eight met with about 65 students altogether. And what we're doing currently is the teachers are working through the two curriculums the best that they can. I'm meeting with the teachers every other week to do one-on-one coaching sessions with the teachers. I'm also meeting with paraprofessionals once a month to kind of show them how to collect data and put that into practice. The solution for these issues would be the Star capacity building plan. So, what the company does is they've scheduled 22 days to come out. Each day, they're going to work in a different building from early childhood up to middle school and with Wilson Aspire. So, they'll meet with those teachers, they'll give suggestions to the teachers on what needs to be done in the classroom. They give the teachers homework and then they come back and do revisits. Between the visits from Star, then I'll continue on with my visits in the classrooms and making sure that the follow-through is there. From Star, once the training is complete, we'll have regional coaches. They'll get resources, we'll have administrator and fidelity checklists to make sure that the program is running smoothly. And the most important thing that we'll get out of it, to me, is that we're going to build our own capacity as a district to where we won't need them to come out anymore. Because then I can have teachers teach teachers and I can go and teach teachers. That's the most important thing to me. As of this year, the, the cost of this will be $50,892. That'll come out of the IDEA Fund for Professional Development. That fund right now was roughly $280,000, so we would take a chunk of that and put it towards the Star training for our teachers. We begin planning for next year in April and May so that we can prioritize dates where they can come out and meet with the teachers. So, this is an ongoing thing. It won't end at the end of this year, it will go on to next year and possibly the following year. The reason we plan in April and May is to see where our teachers are at and what kind of support that they're going to need over the next year. But it really should be decreasing in costs throughout the couple of years that they come out. And like I said before, we're going to be able to build this program and use it as a district and not have to have them come out on a regular basis after this. Right now, the number of kids we have in the program totals 100. There's eight kids that, in the therapeutic day setting, that if we can get everything running the way that it should be running, we would want to begin to pull those kids back. You're looking at, for each kid, is roughly $45,000 a year that we could pull back into the district without having to be refunded by the state. And then, you're looking at the kids in the early childhood through middle school, where this program is run with fidelity. Those kids will go from self-contained setting and start to make their way into the general ed setting. Once they get, there's really two things, three things that they need is receptive and expressive language and the functional routine support. And once they can acquire that kind of stuff, then they can move on and be in the general education setting. As of right now, the number of people who are familiar with the curriculum in the district is fairly low. We, with the turnover that we have with staff, one of the issues is we can't keep the staff trained in the program. And that's really tough when you're talking about students with autism, because routine is really key for students in this room. What we will get in return is, the students are really going to move from the really restrictive setting into a less restrictive setting, so be able to access the general ed curriculum more. Whether that be going into elementary, if they get some resource support and go into a general education with another teacher, or like the middle school level, what it looks like a lot is the students will go into instructional level classrooms. So, the amount of curriculum they're able to access is huge when they start to work their ways through this program. The other thing that I personally think would be big is the staff retention piece. Once we get the teachers and we have the staff on board that can do it, they're going to love to come to work every day and to work with the kids. And that's going to keep them coming back and being in the program and being able to work with the kids. How will you report back? The program comes with learner profiles, so each level of the system has different skills that the kids have. And those are checked off by the teachers three times a year, so we'll look at that. The educational environment code, so how much time is a kid spending in the general ed as opposed to a special ed setting? We'll want to make that number decrease at, we'll, we'll want them to be more in the general ed setting as opposed to a special ed setting. We're also going to look at paraprofessional minutes. How many, who needs to support this kid throughout the day and how many minutes do they need that support? And their IEP goals should be tied directly to the curriculum. When we work with the company, they'll give us these checklists and reports as we go through the trainings, just to make sure that it's being done the right way and the coaches are able to do their jobs. And me as the administrator over the program will be able to do my job to make sure that the teachers are using the curriculum with fidelity.
Questions? Okay, let's open it up for questions. Mr. Connor?
So, a couple, you mentioned the revolving door several times and it sounds like you're tying this solution to better staff retention. So, given where we're at right now, it seems like you've got an assumption that this train the trainer will be part of the answer, if not the answer. And I guess, for me, what I'm, what I would question is, you know, what, um, it seems like there are other parts. I've been on the board a little over five years and this revolving door has gotten worse, it seems. And it, I'm trying not to be skeptical, but I'm having a hard time thinking that this particular program is going to really address, and it might be a piece of it. But, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this in a sense. I guess, the note I wrote to myself is, you know, that the revolving door is really the issue and that this is a piece of it. So, I look at this answer as, maybe it helps us in certain ways? And I can't argue with that, because I don't know it like you would know it. But I think the part that's clear is that special ed, in terms of staffing, is really an issue, along with speech path and other things, if not teachers in general. So, I think, that's something, and I'm not asking for that tonight, because you've made your case. I just think that if the administration says we need this program, it'd be hard for me to argue that we don't. But I'm really skeptical that this goes after that staff retention, and if I might say so. You mentioned all these other roles, like paras and so forth. My wife, who was a para, actually did, was with a young boy that had autism. And I think, you know, my response when I would hear the stories is that... And I think, you know, my response when I would hear the stories is that there's, this is not an easy position. And I have to say, from, from me and personal experience, I think we have a larger discussion that we need to have. And so it's not that this might not be okay, and you did mention the measures for success. And I'd be very curious to know what those would be. I think, um, if I looked at your outcomes, the question that came to my mind is how would we know that this is occurring? Cuz I think this is a hard audience, a lot of ways, on the measurement side. Not saying that we shouldn't do it. Um, so I would say the two things, oh, sorry, one other thing I wrote myself a note. You said data is being collected, and is that a part of our decision, uh, ed system? Is it some other means? And then we put in spreadsheets and upload it? It's a, a nip, but I think if we're going to use data collection in various programs, we really need to understand how those kinds of things are being done, um, to make sure that they're effective. Um, the, the other thing I'll say is that, in special ed, I know it's just me, but it's always hard for me to judge, given the sheer volume of the line items in special ed. And so I really think this is one where maybe it's time for us to say, what, what really do we expect? Cuz it just seems like year after year, um, we struggle with a number of, of items. And sorry to go on about this particular program, because it's not this, but the issues you're raising that is what's on my mind.
Okay, Mr. Segal?
Can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Sure. I, so the, the behavior stuff that you're talking about, um, is addressed through the curriculum as well. The, there are different steps that the teachers and paraprofessionals will go through with the kids to teach them. Like, one of the first things that the kids are supposed to be taught is how to get from the bus to the front door. And there's a level of prompting that goes with the program that they'll help teach for the kids to get through that. So it, that part of it can be addressed.
Sure, if I might say so, as I said, I am not talking about the value of the program itself. But as an assumption, if we already have a revolving door, I mean, um, you know, I can't remember what the percentage is, but let's just pretend it was ten percent. What that means is you have a guaranteed retraining that has to occur on a regular basis. That's why I'm saying to me, the revolving door really is part of the issue, and I'm, don't see how this, it might make it better, but I don't tell you how it addresses that. So I'm not arguing that the program isn't effective in and of itself, but the conditions that are there, I think we have a larger issue.
Okay, Mr. Segal.
It says there, there is a plan to get teachers access to the Star Media Center. Gives, allows teachers time to watch lessons and create materials and have a broader access to the curriculum. What is the cost of this media center? And is that, or is that included with the fifty K?
It's included with.
And that that's something that we'll be able to get down the road as well with no additional cost?
That'll be a reoccurring cost. I believe it's three hundred dollars a teacher.
Oh, pennies. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, my question was, what is the timeframe that we're looking to train staff, teachers, pairs, aides?
Oh, I, I'd like to, for it to start, um, in November sometime? And then go on through the twenty, twenty-one school year? From this point on, about two and a half years.
For training? Okay, and then after that, do we, we're, um, gonna create coaches that will be?
At that time, we'll have district coaches. That'll be wherever, wherever they are in the program. Uh, but there'll be district coaches, I'll be an administrator coach.
I guess that was, my concern is because, um, it seems like the success hinges on our coaches. And it seems like, um, every time we train somebody, they, they leave or, um, getting back to more, uh, what Mr. Connor was saying.
Yeah, and my thought about that is, uh, the people that I have in mind to be coaches are people who are already solidified in the program and have come back for more. So I would focus on those staff members, uh, just because if they're rooted in the program right now, to get them that support, that's, that's the way I'm thinking going about that.
Mr. McCullough?
So why do we get rid of the autism team?
I, I'm assuming they didn't work with enough kids. It was eight staff members and they met on sixty-five kids last year, roughly. They did very little with the self-contained programming and met mostly on students within the general ed.
Some of the feedbacks that I've had from teachers was how they really depended on that group to go to for support and information, and so I'm, and that would have been the general ed teachers if those were students that weren't in self-contained cast, classrooms. So, um, the support that'll be given to teachers outside these self-contained classrooms, um, because we have a lot of student, this is basically for the self-contained classrooms, this is what I'm understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
What are we doing for, to support the teachers who have students, um, with autism, with IEPs that are just in regular classrooms?
Right now, I go and I observe and I make suggestions to the teachers on how to work with the students.
So Star will not be helping them at all?
Uh, i- in the long run, I believe that it will, um, because once the students from the program start to go out to general ed, then we start to train general ed staff, um, what?
Think they'd wanna be prepared, but they also just need a resource too.
Right.
When they need help and, and you're just one person, and how many people do you have out in the classroom, so?
Uh, I've only done three observations up to this point, so.
I, I just, I'm, I'm still not understanding exactly what the Star team's going to come in and do. I see that they're going to do group sessions. I assume those are with, and I don't wanna assume anything, so correct me. If I'm wrong, that they're going to meet with the, um, social workers and speech therapists and the like, because the only one-to-one training with the Star people is with teachers. Is that correct? That's how your Plan Do Study Act reads?
So with the program itself, they come out and they work in the teacher's classroom. So, uh, in that classroom, they'll work with the teachers, the paraprofessionals who are in the room, and any support staff who are in the room at that time. The classrooms will be set up in the different areas of the Star curriculum, so each staff member will have to learn.
I don't know what that means. Will be set up in different areas of the Star curriculum?
So there's, um, receptive language, uh, expressive language, functional routines, um.
So those are just three areas that you gave us? That's what they're focusing on? Star is?
There are five of them, and I don't have them in front of me right now.
We usually get the, um, the PowerPoint as part of our, uh, and that wasn't in there. I don't know if that was just a, an oversight? Cuz I couldn't find it in the, in our documents.
If you look in the contract, the last couple of pages are the full training plan, and it provides, um, objectives and, um, the targeted audience for each coaching visit, and it lays that out. It's the last three to four pages of the contract.
I'm on the PDSA, so I can pop over to that, but, um, when you say you would like to see this go through, um, and I should have looked closer at this. You know, we, we look, is there anybody else that could have, we could have accomplished the same goals with? Did we look at other, um, programs, people to come in? You said we've done this one before. Um, so that's the first part of my, my, my question, but also, um, when you say you would hope that they stay with us till through twenty-one, it's an annual contract. You would have to come back to us and, and tell us how successful it was. And obviously, if it wasn't, you wouldn't be asking for us to renew it. So who else did you look at?
Um, I, uh, the outside consultant that we used last year in our autism team. Uh, there, at this time, is not, uh, variety of autism, self-contained autism curriculum. The curriculum that you find online or anywhere is, uh, for, uh, applied behavior analysis in the home. So there's ver- very little, uh, curriculum as far as, uh, public schools go.
So the curriculum we're using right now?
It's Star.
Is still from the leftover, right?
Yes.
From when they came previously and helped us?
Star is our curriculum. The attempt here is really to be able to kind of level-set implementation expectations, provide the training and support that people need, and really build that internal capacity, so we're not having to continually rely on the vendor. Um, and, you know, to address the, um, revolving door, really it's having those common expectations, those strategies that will support classroom management and support, um, student learning over the long term. Um, so the goal here really is to take what we're already doing, but really be faithful implementers of the whole program, so that our students really are getting the benefits of the high-quality curriculum. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify the financial piece a little bit. The fifty thousand something, whatever, that's for the year one. And, and one of your slides said something about that number will go down in future years, so, so we would only be approving when this comes to board, that fifty thousand. And then, as Mr. McCullough said, we assess and determine whether or not we wanna continue it and then, then rea- reapprove future years down the road. Okay? Any other questions for Brett?
I, I do, just, you con, you said we will end up with district coaches. So if right now, this first year, the, is to, you know, build the capacity in the classroom, like the curriculum, at what point will we develop individuals into coaches? And will those be separate positions that we'll be funding as well, outside of, you know, the staffing that we have for those, for the self-contained classrooms?
The idea for those would be, uh, they would be teacher positions with like the point two added onto it as the coach for the program.
If you're in an elementary school and you're a teacher full-time in a classroom, how do we add a point two in? Do we just bring somebody in to teach your class part of the day, or how's that work? Do we know?
Great question. I don't know. That would have to be problem solved. And, um, right, like at, at, uh, Spring Creek right now, I have a floater teacher that goes into the classrooms to work with groups of kids, so that's an option there. If you, I could have that floater teacher go in and cover so much of the day to where my coach teacher then could go work with, uh, the different staff. And hey, I, what if that floater teacher is my coach? Then, you know, they're gonna be working with all the staff members in the building, so. It's.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I think we, I think we got all the questions covered. Uh, next is School Works, and I think Dr. Jarrett, this is you.
Okay, thanks, Brett. Almost fumbled there. Thank you. The School Works proposal is an attempt to build some internal capacity through a partnership around the charter school renewal process. And the problem is, we have two charter schools to reauthorize this year and one charter school to reauthorize next year. And our accountability pro- protocols, agreements, and processes need work. We did do some pre-work on the front end to build our capacity. We are doing a lot of things internally, but we have decided that we think it would be in our best interest to go through this reauthorization process with some support. And I'm gonna talk to you about what that support would look like. We do have the innovation team, we're doing a lot of independent work. Dr. Wolf, in particular, has headed this process up. We also made multiple leadership team visits. Dr. Munson, Dr. Wolf, and I attended all three schools and spent, uh, uh, the significant portion of a day visiting all three of the charter programs last year. I know some board members have made visits as well. But what we're really trying to move away from is the renewal process being a very passive experience. We wanna change that paradigm and make it a very active, eh, 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 process, an improved process, as opposed to what we've done. And when the board makes the decision, we want you to have the wealth of experience throughout the process, not just sitting back and listening to a group talk about their proposal. So here's how it'll be different. Um, well, first of all, before we get into that, the, the alternative choices are pretty clear. One would be, um, just purely build internal capacity. And we are pursuing this strategy as well, but not fully. We are attending the NACA conference to build partnership with outside providers, as well as looking at opportunities to improve our skills as charter authorizers. We've also spent a lot of time, uh, at the state level, uh, working with INCS, the Illinois Charter Network. And the bottom line is, we're looking how to be a better charter authorizer. And the terminology just simply means, we are making the decision to reauthorize a charter provider for a length of time. That's what I mean by being an authorizer, and that's something we take really seriously. Other outside providers, other than School Works, would have been an option. Um, there was nobody that really impressed us at the same level. And then finally, a repeat process from twenty thirteen, fourteen, which I already described, was fairly reactive. And I don't think was wildly popular with the board last time, uh, to say the least. So to talk a little bit about the, the solution, there are four phases. The total cost would be twenty-seven thousand dollars. The first phase is a needs assessment. We look at our current documentation, our current charter renewal documents that we've collected at this point, and we will have a chance to evaluate that. Two, technical assistance training. How do we build our capacity to better align our internal capacity with best practice in renewing the charter? Three, development of a protocol and a rubric. When we go out and visit a school, as well as when we go out and ask the schools and these net, these charter networks to apply for an extended period of time, they can ask for up to five years. We wanna make sure we have a very clear protocol and a very clear rubric, so a charter provider knows what it takes to be successful and that we are very transparent about what we are concerned about and things that we think need to be replicated. And then finally, instead of the process happening on the boardroom floor, we will build our capacity, and this is the most expensive part of the proposal, to co-facilitate one of our two renewal site visits. So essentially, this group that has done hundreds of these across the country in multiple cities will walk us through all of the work to build our capacity, then we'll go actually do a site visit together. Then we will repeat that process with the second charter school, and I'll kinda walk you through the timeline. But the cost will be twenty-seven thousand plus our staff time. And the timeline, we would wanna have a needs assessment occurring in November, the technical assistance training happening in December, and as well as the development of the rubric. So we get the pre-work done, so that we can go into January or February, depending on wh- when we can arrange it with the charters to have site visit training and ultimately the site visit. And then finally, we would be able to bring this to the board in February, at the latest in March, so the board can make a decision. And again, instead of making a decision based on the charters telling their story, we will have gone through a very rig- rigorous, rigorous and collaborative process with the charters to better understand each other and our needs, and hopefully come to a much stronger future contract if we decide to go in that direction, or a very clear understanding of why we, why we would wanna part ways. The return on investment is really clear. We're investing twenty-seven thousand dollars. We have a district scorecard that we're gonna use to hold all schools accountable. And we have six hundred and fifty students right now just in these two schools. And if you add in Jackson, which we'll be looking at next year, there are a thousand of our students that are in these schools. And we have to make a determination, are these gonna be our partners for, uh, basically a very short period of time? No period of time after this year, or are we gonna make a full five-year commitment again? Um, the results, uh, in terms of performance on state tests is uneven at best, but I do think that there is an opportunity, based on the site visits, I think there was some more optimism, that we can improve as a charter authorizer. And I think our charter authorizers are, or our charter providers are open to their improvement as well. So this partnership could potentially strengthen, and the return on investment would be, would really come down to changing the dynamics of the relationship in a way that benefits students and a much more accountability-based investment. The bottom line is, charters are supposed to do two things. Schools are supposed to get, charter schools and/or charter providers are supposed to get a ton of freedom, but they're also supposed to get a bunch of accountability. get a ton of freedom, but they're also supposed to get a bunch of accountability with that to get results. The contract is essentially a pay-for-performance to educate our students. And at the end of the day, that process, the freedom has been there, but the close monitoring of that work isn't where I would like it yet. So we are very excited about the opportunity to work with a national organization to help us improve our capacity in this area. We're ultimately looking to also learn about how we can better manage our own schools as we move to our scorecard system. So not only will these site visits benefit us as we look at the performance of our charter schools, this will also help us to build on some of the protocols we've built to evaluate our own district-run schools as well. The idea would be to then report back to the board in October. You will have very clear feedback on how you thought the last process went, and we can decide if there are any additional trainings or follow-ups that are needed before we go through the process with Jackson. And that will be the third school on the list. So our ask is for the twenty-seven thousand dollar contract, to invest in the capacity of our team, to improve the quality of these visits, because we're about to make a multimillion-dollar decision about the length of this renewal process. We can't undo how we've managed the contract up to this point, other than really try to, at this point, make the length of the contract contingent on a very good and thorough analysis of how these charters are performing, and determine from the board's perspective, make a really clear recommendation on our end of whether we think these five-year agreements should be decreased at any level. And hopefully strengthen our partnerships, because these schools are educating a large chunk of our elementary children right now. And we think that this investment in the process on the front end is a wise investment to improve the partnership. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Okay, Mr. Cullack.
Yeah, this is my night to talk. So first of all, I think this is a very good idea. The approach seems good. One quick question on the rubric and the needs assessment. I'm surprised that they don't have a standard off of which we could at least...
They do, but it's proprietary, so we would be able to access their standard.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they've done hundreds of these, so...
Yeah.
Essentially, what we've been doing so far over the last year is, we've been working a lot with CPS to borrow, because they authorize about sixty thousand students worth of charters, so basically double RPS of just charters out of three hundred and sixty thousand students. But they have a gigantic department that does this work. So our idea is, we're really trying to borrow from the expertise of a company that can give us those proprietary materials, but more importantly, really walk us through the why and gain the benefit of their experience, so that our capacity is built, rather than just borrowing somebody else's rubric and hoping...
Sure.
Because the bottom line is, if we go that route, we feel like we'll learn a lot on the fly, but we won't be as prepared to make a great recommendation to the board in March without that capacity building.
So let me just ask, so in their standard and its proprietary, I totally would understand that. I guess I was thinking, if we did go through with this, that when we started this out, we would have that, we could evaluate. One of the things that it strikes me, if you look at industry, one of the typical things you do is you look at how people categorize, because that's one thing that takes a while. And if they had a standard method on how to categorize, like what characteristics, et cetera, I mean, to me, that sometimes, that sort of standardization alone is frankly worth the money, because they will have walked through that. So I know you've looked at this, and again, I think this is a really good idea. Do we have any sense of the percentage of denial for charters in state of Illinois? Like, a couple percentage?
In the Chicago public schools, there have certainly been some denials. And I think our job is to really build a clear rubric here, unfortunately, towards the end of the process, through the visit process and through a future agreement, to kind of ensure that the rules are a lot more clear. When we wrote our last authorization agreement, I think there was still too much flexibility on the accountability side. There wasn't enough in there. And we want to make sure that future agreements are written in line with what cities that are doing, hundreds of these are doing, as opposed to us kind of coming up with what we think might work. Bottom line is, we want to borrow from this expertise in terms of comparing our agreement to best practice in the needs assessment phase. And then that will lead us into the training to convert where we are to where we need to be to make a better decision. The board really deserves a better process than it got last time.
So the answer to the percentage is, it's probably pretty small, and outside of Chicago? Do we know?
Increasingly across the country, as districts are adopting what the literature is referring to as the rowing and steering model, where the district office in a sense steers the boat, while the individual school operators that are district-run or charter-run row. Increasingly, if you look at New Orleans, Indianapolis, Chicago, New York, we're increasingly seeing charters that are losing their charter.
Okay.
So the trend is heavily in increasing accountability in exchange for that freedom. I think early on, there was a lot of flexibility given across the country, and I think that trend is heading very sharply in the other direction in terms of, maybe there's some expanded access. But one of the part of what limits it as well is in CPS, for example, they've negotiated a limit in the number of charters. And so if they want to add new quality partners, they have to prune out some of the lower-performing charters as well.
Yeah. Is there any part of the method from School Works that talks about public or community, either input and/or expectation?
Absolutely. That'll be built into the rubric.
Okay, so that is a part of it, okay. Sorry, want to write myself now. The third point is, you mentioned about five-year agreements. Is there any kind of trend on that, that you saw?
What we told our charter partners is that the five-year agreement is no longer going to be a standard boilerplate approach. They could certainly ask for that. But part of what we hope to accomplish in this process is to set probably a shorter provisional timeframe, so that we can recalibrate how we work together, and talk about a different district environment in terms of the way the relationship works. It's been very heavily oriented around financial and compliance, and we think a shorter agreement would give the opportunity to really show that academic accountability. So that's where we plan to steer the conversation. And I was very transparent with the providers that we will need to be better as authorizers, and we're going to work on that capacity as a district, but we will expect much more in terms of academic accountability.
Last question is, you mentioned partnerships. Are those partnerships including things that are standard activities that we have that we might offer to the charters, or is that still off the table?
No, I think...
Arts athletics?
Yeah, I think we're going to be open to all of those conversations. We've talked about things like an open enrollment process. It's been a very adversarial, a relationship that's been either adversarial, or essentially both sides keeping their distance. And I don't think that's a good strategy when we're talking about educating a thousand of our students. So we are going to, I think all things are going to be on the table, in terms of the length of the agreement, in terms of the accountability, and in terms of some positive things that could come out of the partnership as we work together. We need to do a better job together, both as authorizers and providers for our students. The results are very, very poor right now, and I don't think anyone on the board, or the administration, or frankly, at our charters, finds their performance where it is an acceptable place to be.
And one final thing is, do we track the statistics of turnover, back and forth between charters and RPS?
We can certainly ask for that as part of the process. I can tell you that it has been a very one-way movement, where charters have done a lot of really good investment in professional development, that's been one of their strengths. And we have inherited a great deal of those teachers. I think that is an opportunity for us to improve in that area as well. But I would say that has been a benefit to the district. I've heard in many elementary school visits in particular, folks being very happy that they got some very highly-trained teachers after a couple of years of lots of long days of PD, they were happy to become RPS teachers. Now, that hurts the turnover rate and the results for those charters, so there's a downside to that. But I think most of our elementary schools have been happy to have access to that talent. I don't know if that's the way a partnership should really look, though.
Yeah. I think the other part to that, I was thinking of not literal turnover alone, that students going back and forth between charters.
No, one of the things that I have, there certainly is more of that than we'd like, but what we haven't seen a lot of is adrift on mission in terms of kind of intentionally excluding students from the system, at least we don't have a lot of evidence of that. So I don't think this particular group of charters has been unethical in the way they've moved students in and out, at least at any large scale. So I think that's one of the positives of the partnership right now. But a common onboarding system, I think, is something we're going to have to take a look at to better address that moving forward, because any turnover for students that contributes to our mobility rate does not help us in our ultimate goal of making sure all of our students are college and career-ready.
Ms. Cullack.
First, I want to apologize to all the people here for Erickson, because I'm not sure why you weren't first on the list. You're so nice to sit through all this. Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
That's a thought. As a board member, I would say to, if we have large community groups coming in to support an initiative, we're having a conversation, it would be nice to put that early on in the agenda, so that, not that this isn't all fascinating and you're going to go home and cogitate, but to be, you're very kind to be here. Thank you. So, and having been through this charter piece numerous times, I'm thrilled to have some outside help. I think that we tried to do well, we haven't. I noticed that legal is, you know, part of the team, has to be part of the team and part of the contracts that we put forward. And we continually have missed things and, you know, have wished that there were pieces in there that we had put in and didn't. But so that I understand what exactly we're getting from these people, the needs assessment, they're participating in the needs assessment with us or teaching? I'm not sure how many of these pieces they're teaching us how to do, and how many of these pieces they're actually doing with us.
Right, so they're doing all of it with us, but they're also bringing their expertise. So the needs assessment and the PDSA outlines it in greater detail, as does the contract. But essentially, the needs assessment is, what are we currently doing or planning on doing as compared to best practice? Technical assistance training then has them teach us how to move to best practice. Development of the rubric has us prepare the process for the visit, but ultimately for the approval. And then the site visit gives us the evidence we need. So they're with us every step of the way. That's where all the cost is here, is their time and travel to support us through all four phases of the proposal.
So that rubric that you're referring to, is there just one rubric, or is there two? Because I'm hearing we need a rubric for how we're going to evaluate where we're at right now, and a rubric for what we're looking for as we move forward if we're to continue to have the charter. So are there two different ones, or how does, what are we referring to?
The rubric I'm referring to is the rubric we will use to select the schools, or to determine the quality of the school visit, and we can evaluate what we're seeing in the visit. The technical assistance training will help us build things like, look at our current charter, converting our current charter agreements and contractual language into improved language. So there will be multiple documents that will be generated from this, it'll probably be more than two. But the rubric I'm referring to is a specific school visit rubric, so that when we conduct the technical assistance visit, the charters and the RPSs, the authorizer, are very clear on what we're trying to accomplish and what our expectations are.
And I do note that it says site visit training. They will also accompany our...
Yes, on one of the two.
On one of the two. So it's kind of training as well.
That's right. They'll come with us for the first one, then we will repeat that process on our own as a second one. I'm trying to keep the cost down, so I thought getting the training for one would allow us to then replicate it on our own for the second, because that's the biggest piece of the cost. That's about fourteen thousand, and so that would have almost doubled the cost had we done both site visits. But I think we'll get enough out of one with them that we'll be ready to do the second one on our own.
So for me, the need is there, the cost is not a lot. The scenario, I guess, I think you've answered this, Dr. Jarrett, is that if we want to add more academic accountability, then one scenario could be, we would not grant a five-year
Correct.
renewal. We might grant a one- or two-year renewal with some targets for improvement in their academic outcomes.
Yes, something shorter would be an option, and I think a very good option because of the absence of accountability in this current five-year, just in terms of the way we have enforced and served as a partner. This gives both the charter, as well as the authorizer in our case, the chance to really grow into their respective roles. We want them to get better results for our students, and we want to be better at supporting them and getting better results for the students, even without being overly oppressive in the way we manage the contract. Again, it's lots of accountability in exchange for lots of freedom. We've really done all the freedom with very little of the accountability, and that's what needs to be changed here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Erickson now. Mrs. Detman, are you the starting presenter?
Hello, good evening. So at our last board meeting, you had a formal introduction to the Early Development Instrument from Jacqueline Bascos, who's joining us again tonight. And so what I'd like to do in terms of formatting, hi Jacqueline. We also have community partners with us tonight. We have Anisha Grimmett from Alignment Rockford. We have Matthew Johnson from both Alignment and Transform. And we have David Sidney as well from Transform. We also have Kim Nelson, our Early Childhood Executive Director. And we really are kind of the team driving this work. I'm sorry, Anne. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think that we've met. Hi. I apologize for the omission. And also Earl Dotson Jr., key partner in the Early Development Instrument. And so what I'd like to do tonight is keep the presentation of the PDSA relatively brief, because you did have some extensive time last week, and spend the majority of our time on questions and answers. Embedded in the presentation is a four-minute video that really provides more detail on what the instrument is and what its purpose is. So I'm going to take a risk and show a video here, and hopefully that will work when the time has come.
Are you to turn off the lights? Just asking.
No, four minutes. So we always start with the problem. And in our case, our problem is a great problem. We have a motivated and engaged community, but we lack rich, common data to really leverage all of that enthusiasm to drive a change in outcomes for students and their families. This project has come to fruition relatively quickly, and it began in June of 2018, when Transform and Alignment, along with partnership from the Tamarack Institute, led a third-grade literacy summit. And at that time, we had dozens of community members who engaged deeply in identifying, you know, what are some of the greatest challenges that our community faces that prevents us from having grade-level readers by third grade? And how can we rally as a community to solve that problem? And that was, it was a wonderful, energetic feel in the room. However, I left thinking, but we really are the drivers of literacy as the district. Where else can our community fill in to help support families, to make sure that kids arrive ready to learn, and that we're really wrapping around those supports? But that was just a thought. The next week, Kim Nelson and I traveled down to Bloomington for the Birth Through Third Grade Continuity Conference. And that's exactly what it says it is, from birth through third grade, what is our continuous level of support for families and children? And during that time, we were able to sit down and listen to other pilot communities in the state of Illinois who have been using the Early Development Instrument. We heard from Ken Kiki, we heard from East St. Louis, we heard from the Austin neighborhood of Chicago, we heard from Oak Park and Skokie. And very quickly, it crystallized for me that this is really what we're missing. We're missing data. We're missing real data about our kids, not just their academics, but everything about them, the whole child. And so that led us to really identifying this need, which is data for a cohesive, systemic change aligned with need. We have thousands of volunteers in our schools every single day, and their value is tremendous for us. When we think about actually... When we think about actually moving the needle on third-grade literacy, on readiness for learning, readiness for kinder, we know that it has to be more than a program-by-program approach. We need to have systemic change. And in order to have systemic change, we have to have patience, we have to have incredible data, and we have to have incredible partnerships. And so that's what this PDSA really focuses on. And it aligns perfectly with where we are as a district and as a community right now with our ongoing focus on growth and achievement. We're not just talking about academic growth. We're talking about growth of the whole child. And last week, Jaclyn began her presentation with the question, and how are the children? And right now, I don't know that we have the best data in our hands to truly answer that question. So it's not the only possible solution. This is a possible solution and there are other things that we could consider. The first came out of Transform, which was to join the National Campaign for Grade Level Reading. Well, that still puts the focus exclusively on literacy and still doesn't provide us with that leverageable data. The second thing we could opt to do as a district is to continue with isolated programming as we are and make no change. The third thing that we could do is to continue to focus with Alignment Rockford and Transform on access to early childhood. The great news is we have waiting lists. So we know that we're providing tremendous access to early childhood in our community as a district already. So is that the most leverageable way that we can work together as partners to make a difference? And so we arrived at part of the solution. And part of the solution is getting that data set into our hands as community partners so that we can really make that commitment to work together and act on the data. And you heard last week a little bit about what that data involves, how it's collected. As a just a quick reminder, it's a hundred and three questions that kindergarten teachers provide answers to based on their relationship with their students. They're the ones who know them the best. And we give them an entire half of the year to be sure that they're, you know, they're clear on their children, they know them well. We collect data in January so that then for the next three years, we're engaging in long-term planning to really impact policy and practice. So I'm going to allow the video to speak for itself. It's just four minutes, but it walks you through what the tool is and what the tool is not.
A child's early years of life are incredibly important. What happens during the first five years has lifelong effects. That's because the brain develops rapidly during these years and changes based on a child's experiences. If children receive good quality stimulation, support, and nurturance during these years, the brain will develop in healthy ways, giving children a strong foundation for future success. Sadly, not all children have positive experiences during these crucial years and lack the stimulation, support, and nurturance needed for the brain to develop in the healthiest way possible. That means there are more challenges for these children as they grow. Many later problems, including school failure, antisocial behavior, teen pregnancy, obesity, high blood pressure, depression, coronary heart disease, type 2 diabetes, premature aging, and memory loss can be traced back to early childhood. But if we help children and families early on, we can avoid many of these negative outcomes thanks to the brain's ability to easily change and adapt at this stage, something that becomes much harder as we age. Invest in resources during this unique window of opportunity provides the best return on investment, with governments receiving between four and eight dollars back in benefits for every one dollar spent on early childhood programs. That is why knowing how our young children are doing is so vital for their future well-being. If we don't know how children are doing, we can't identify any problems. We can't effectively help them and we won't know if things are getting better or worse. To stay informed about children's early development, communities across Canada and around the world are using the Early Development Instrument, or EDI for short. The EDI is a teacher-completed questionnaire developed by Dr. Stan Oxford and Magdalena Janis at McMaster University in Hamilton, Ontario, Canada. The EDI measures kindergarten children's ability to meet age-appropriate and developmental expectations across five general areas: physical health and well-being, emotional maturity, social competence, language and cognitive development, and communication skills and general knowledge. Teachers are best suited to complete the EDI because they know the range of appropriate child behaviors and skills within a school setting. And by the time they complete the EDI in the second half of the school year, they've had plenty of opportunity to see how each child learns, plays, and interacts with other children. After teachers complete the EDI on each individual child in their class, the results are grouped together to give a snapshot of how children are doing across schools, neighborhoods, cities, or even provinces and countries. Children who fall below the standardized EDI cutoff scores are referred to as vulnerable. Research shows that these children are more likely to experience poorer outcomes later in life, academically, emotionally, and in their relationships with peers. Focusing on strengthening the areas in which children are vulnerable allows schools, communities, and governments to make decisions on how to best support early development. Schools may be good at recognizing individual children who struggle, but without knowing the major areas of strength and weakness in a school and community, there can be no action to help all children. Most of the children vulnerable on the EDI do not have any health problems and will not be helped through any other means. Without knowing how all children are developing, schools and communities are left guessing. This is what makes EDI data so important. In many places, collecting EDI data is the first step toward mobilizing communities and engaging those who aren't usually involved in promoting the development of young children. By getting a glimpse of the development and well-being of young children through the EDI, people can be inspired to do something to improve the lives of our young children and help shape a better future in their own communities and beyond.
And so you may be asking, but how did this come out of a third-grade literacy summit? If we're spending all of our time on early development and, you know, kindergarten readiness, really? There's a ninety between we're just saying between ninety-four and ninety-seven percent accuracy and predictability of outcomes based on the domains I'm about to talk about. When you know these vulnerabilities at age five, we can very accurately predict the outcomes for them by fourth grade. So while our entry point was a conversation around third grade, in reality, we have to be partnering much sooner in order to actually change those outcomes. As Jaclyn shared with you last week, the tool really focuses on five domains and they're very difficult to read up there. Physical health and well-being, social competence, emotional maturity, language and cognitive development, and communication skills and general knowledge. Now, do we already collect some of this data on children? We do. Mostly, it aligns in the language and cognitive development. It aligns very nicely with our kindergarten individual development survey, which gives us child-by-child information. The difference between kids, as we call it, and the EDI is that kids, again, is an individual student-by-student record of data and EDI is a population measure. It gives us information about our entire community and it gives us information on these five domains. So that as a team of champions for this project, we can be leveraging resources across all five domains in alignment with the vulnerabilities that are identified in the report. The total cost for this project is $300,000. A hundred thousand of this does come from the Erickson Institute funders, so we are subsidized by a third. Two hundred thousand of this will come from Fund 10 from the district. How are we going to know if we're making a difference? In year one, we're going to focus exclusively on monitoring our progress on the action plan. Included in your board packet is a task list, a list of meetings, and a very extensive PDSA, which walks you through every step of this. I would encourage you, if you have questions about what's included in that, it's all there, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have. By year two, we will have been engaging in strategic planning and we will be developing as a group, progress monitoring metrics. So we'll be able to report back not only on the results of the data, but what we're doing with the data. And that's part of the strength of our partnership with Erickson, is that they come to facilitate and build our capacity as a community collaborative team so that we're analyzing the results and then beginning our action planning around them. Return on investment is important. This is a heavy investment for the district. We put this under opportunity cost for a couple of reasons. Number one, if we don't have this data, as the video alluded to, we may not recognize children who struggle, who would not otherwise be identified through special education. So there are large swaths of children whose needs we may not be meeting and the data will help us understand that. Secondly, it helps us to really mobilize communities and our community supports toward a common goal, leveraging them to change outcomes. And then finally, head off the presses, new research suggests, and this is the Heckman Equation, that thirteen there's a thirteen percent return on investment for high-quality birth-through-five programs. We'll be reporting back along our journey. Data collection happens in January, data reporting happens in May, strategic planning happens in the summer. And we'll be keeping you up to date on our progress along the way. So for now, I'd like to open it up for questions and invite all of our partners here from the team to step up and answer anything that we can for you.
Who would like to start? Anybody?
Ms. McCollum.
So do we have anything from the groups here as to how they perceive their participa- participation in this whole?
Sure. Anisha or Matthew or David?
Hi. As part of the initiative, Alignment Rockford sees itself as being kind of the collective impact group for this, the neutral convener, the the organization that will help facilitate the discussions. So using our alignment process when it comes to our tactical planning and our measurements and using those indicators to report back to the team as well. We'll also be the neutral convener, as I should say, of the community resources. So leveraging that and getting everyone on board to be a part of this initiative as well as disseminating the data to the community and doing our community roadshows and getting buy-in from the community along the way. We're going to be leveraging the capacity as well of Transform Rockford to help build out our networks and our facilitation capabilities as we go throughout the neighborhoods, disseminating the the community data and also with engaging other resources for this going forward.
Thanks for your time. Really excited about this effort that we're underway in our community. As Anisha said, the resources that we can help bring, one is direct project team that you probably have recognized in the community called Great Neighborhoods. And this aligns right with the efforts that they're doing in terms of engaging all neighborhoods within our region. The community said in the education spoke in that process, the development of the transformation plan that's supporting our students and families, that all pre-K through 12th grade students were supported. So this is this is part of that strategy, moving out within the community and playing a lead role in driving our community to see that all of our students are being are successful. So we're excited to partner, come alongside Alignment Rockford. Just a little context, so the June workshop was part two of a long journey that began the previous October where the community said, what is that collective energy using collective impact that we could all as a community say, how can we leverage our energy and our support, our volunteers, to go after and solve a particular problem? And so for the community, from 125 folks in the first round and roughly over eighty, eighty-five in the second round, it kept moving more and more towards education and saying, and then it got to this one metric of many metrics around grade-level reading and then for Heidi and the team to really help educate the community, the whole process, the birth to fourth grade is really the story that the community needs to understand and embrace that, to see change at these key metrics. This is a big, early childhood is essential, important. So so as a kind of giving you a short summary of that journey that led to where we're at today in support of this.
Good evening. My role here is that I was on the education spoke team for Transform Rockford to help articulate those goals and then the co-chair of the Healthy Starts Team with Alignment Rockford. So I was asked to co-chair with Heidi this team. So the work, the education piece of kindergarten readiness is the pull around which we can align hundreds of other community services. What we kept running up to in both the Transform and Alignment work around early childhood readiness is that only half or so of a student's success is school-based factors. And the team curriculum and instruction is doing all they can to increase that piece of it. But everything else, food, medicine, housing, transportation, what's going on in the family? We know about the trauma that happens to a lot of our kids. All of those pieces matter too, so the school district can leverage that. So along with David and Anisha and their other partners, we're doing a lot of the strategic planning piece in year two when we get the data back. So the proof is in the pudding of can we then say, the district, the biggest body, employer and tax body in the area, has put down its marker to say this is important? Now, all these other organizations need to come alongside to say, we're going to do this work so that our children thrive. Because if our kindergartners are thriving when we redo the assessment three years later, we'll know their families are thriving, their siblings are thriving, their neighborhoods are thriving. So a lot of that community planning work. So we've got a champion team, most of whom you're seeing here tonight. Wester Wury, the chief of staff for the mayor, could not be here tonight because he had a zoning meeting. So if somebody needed a nap, they could probably find that meeting. And he'll be on the champion team. And then we've got a pilot team that's about thirty to thirty-five community stakeholders. Some of those are the people that you see at all these meetings because we need them there. And others are new folks to this field who are ready to work on a neighborhood-based transformation so that our children thrive. So we've got those teams set up and we're scheduling those meetings contingent on your all's approval of the grant. So that's that's an outline.
Ms. McCollum, anything else?
I'm still trying to comprehend how everybody's working together. Because I understand we're going to be doing, you know, the data collection, our teachers are going to be doing that. And then we have all these other resources. I like the poll analogy, that's great. And and it can't just be for kindergartners, obviously. I mean, we're we're not just going to focus on this one group, although we're going to focus on the information we have from them, but it'll help us develop those other spokes. So at both organizations, is everybody meeting together to do this? Is that?
Yes. So we are working on developing our meeting calendar. We've done, I think, about three months' worth of work in about the last month. And we've really rallied around this project together as a team. One group that we didn't mention as part of our champions team is the REA. And we have the president of the REA on our team as well because teachers are a critical component of this process. And so we've developed a timeline, communication timeline, pending board approval so that we can get this kicked off. And we have our dates scheduled in January for data collection.
Well, it sounds like you've been participatory for the last, even though we haven't hired you yet? Jaclyn, right? All right. I hope that helps other board members. I'm trying to formulate a full. So other questions? I'll leave the floor.
Just really. Go ahead, Earl.
No, I was just going to say really quickly, just you're saying your question is a concern. Matthew and I, we we often talk about that piece about those community, those other organizations, when you talk about how they're going to work together. The strength with Alignment and Transform is that they'll be able to really, I don't know if the word is commandeer, but really work with those other community organizations who we don't know who we may need down the road, right? We don't know what the data is going to tell us. So for example, in one area, the issue may be busing, right? You know, they may need kids, may need to get to one location to another. And so, you know, having the, you know, the Alignment/Transform kind of connection, they'll be able to work and kind of do a lot of that work with us in terms of talking to those other community organizations who have the specific, you know, who have the specific resource that a that a student or a neighborhood or a family might need. I hope is that I don't know if that clears that up a little bit.
And in case anybody misses reads my question, I'm totally supportive of this collaborative effort. It's we have such energy in the community to want to make us better, to help kids, to help the school, the educational system, because we know that's, you know, the key to the community. And so I just want to make sure that people, I mean, that that energy, that we're putting it to a good place and people know what their their job is and how they can help and what their, you know, what their part is. And so And so, working together makes that possible, but if everybody, working in silos, obviously wouldn't, so.
That's our, that's really our strike on the ball, we're really focused on that.
Yeah, and have been for a while, as some of you know. It feels to me, 10 years ago, when I arrived in this town, that possibility of these organizations being in the same room was unlikely, let alone working from the same set of data and working on common strategic planning. So I'm hopeful that this is another big step forward for the community as a whole in thinking about adaptive change rather than technical fixes and culture shifts around collaboration that put children and families, especially vulnerable children and families first. So I think a lot of the steps that Alignment, Transform have done over the last three, four, five, six years make possible now what feels like a big step in the right direction. So it's a really important question. And part of it, we're going to figure out as we go. We don't have all the answers yet because we don't have the data yet, we're, we'll make it work together.
Mr. Escobedo.
So, yeah, don't seem, like Ms. McCollough, don't misunderstand my question here. I'm going to play devil's advocate, just for the, I'm, I mean, I'm supportive of this initiative, but I'm, I'm going to play devil's advocate here, just for the sake of vetting the program here, but help me understand, if, what much more data do we need that we don't already have? So for example, if you were to go to one of our most challenging schools and talk to intervention support specialists, what other data do we need that we don't already have that tells us that we have, you know, percentage of populations that are struggling because they are not showing to school, they're not coming ready, that, what I'm going to with this is, are we doing analysis paralysis here where we could be taking action now? So where we already have, you know, almost first quarter, going through, end of the first quarter, and we have very high absenteeism rate, and kids are not coming school-ready, and we are trying to make a dent in this year's academic achievement standardized test scores? So just again, just.
Sure. No, it's a, it's a good question. So I'll start and then maybe if you could fill in. So we have, what we have primarily is academic data. And attendance data. But are children coming to school dressed appropriately for the weather? Are they coming to school with good, being well-cared-for? Are they, do their families have access to direct transportation routes? Are there opportunities for them to develop gross motor in the summer and after school within a reasonable distance around their home? We can't possibly know that. And it would be very student by student as opposed to community-wide. This data really does serve as a community needs assessment. Our lens as a school district is on each individual child. And so the, the, there are big gaps in our data. And the value of using the tool, which then creates that neighborhood-by-neighborhood heat map, is that our partnerships then with our community partners, we start to overlay those social services. So we look at the neighborhoods that are red in a particular domain or subdomain, and we ask the question, for example, if there are vulnerabilities in physical health and wellbeing, where are their free clinics located? What are the operating hours of those clinics? What are the transportation routes to and from a clinic that is open for emergencies or for vaccinations or for eye exams or for dental exams? We could also take a look at access to fresh food, access to a food pantry. There are, we could look at a myriad of social services. Our map data does not allow us to do that, and our attendance data does not allow us to do that. So while we have that data within the scope of the responsibility of the district, we're limited in terms of actually organizing and mobilizing community supports. Want to add to that?
I think that was very well said. But I also would add that, you know, because this is a common data set for many different entities to have common messaging, and, and what we know is every, every different group has different types of data. This is that community-level data, but when we're thinking about the school district engaging in this level of data, typically, I'm a former administrator, all the fingers would point back at my school and what I was doing for my school and what we needed to do within my school system. This is a, an opportunity for the village to raise the child, to come together and support the school system, so that the onus doesn't fall directly and only on the school system itself. This is for, a data set for not just the school system but beyond.
For the follow-up question?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm struggling because I think if, again, just, if, if you were to go to a classroom, a challenged school, a classroom, you could probably go and ask the teacher and say, yep, who are your students that are struggling, that are not coming ready to class, that, or you could look at the data, for example, at students that are having behavioral issues regularly. So I guess what I'm asking is.
The weakness in that approach would be very much anecdotal and very much observation and very much teacher by teacher, very dependent on a particular teacher's attention to particular details about particular students. And so again, what's, what's lacking then is that entire community-wide snapshot. Having individual student data doesn't help us really drive systemic change. We're talking about changes not just to practice but also to policy. In order to change policy, we need to have a really good understanding of all the people impacted by that possible policy.
There were, there were previous efforts to, and the name escapes me, with the city, I believe, for poverty mapping throughout the city. So it seems like we know where the poverty areas are at and what general sum of those services are needed and tying it up with the school.
We may not be limited to just poverty, however. When we're looking at social competence and emotional maturity, those may not be isolated based on socioeconomic status. We could very well find out things about children in some of our more affluent neighborhoods where they do, they need support, and, and we're not aware of that.
So I guess my question really is for, there's always a lot of skepticism in the community. How do we, how do we know that this is, you know, like I said before, there's, there's always been a lot of initiatives, a lot of programs. How do we know that this program is different? Or what, as opposed to?
Well, what I can say is, well, we've never done this before. And can we guarantee the future in terms of exactly what will happen with the outcomes? No, and it would be foolish of me to stand here and guarantee a, a future of, you know, progressively changing outcomes for every student because we decided to gather data. What I can say though is that as a part of this project, we're asking our partners to truly commit. And we have demonstrated a commitment. And that has been evident to me in the last few months, and especially in the last six weeks, with how quickly we've rallied and organized. And it's evident even in the Alignment Rockford strategic planning session, where our outcomes for early childhood, our strategic plan for early childhood really focuses around this data set and allowing this data set to then drive the needs for programmatic change. I think as a collective group, we can recognize that the program-by-program approach isn't having the intended outcome. You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, you want to go next?
Yeah, that's fine. You might have already answered this question, but I might have missed it. What is the expected timeframe that we're to expect, to expect to collect data?
Data happens in January, and then that is cleaned, scrubbed, mapped, prepared, and presented to teachers first in May.
Okay. And then when this, data implications? So when do we expect to implement it, once we receive the data?
May 29th, we'd like to share with teachers. June 3rd, we'd like to share with principals. And then from there, we have a, the summer of planning as a, as a community group. And so that strategic planning work around the results of the data would begin in June.
I mean, that's good to hear because, like I said, I've been on, not on this board, but I've been working in the community for years, and it seems that we always have great ideals, but we never execute very well. So just where you have that planned, it's encouraging. And so I just hope we execute it.
We, we are tightly planned for the first two years. And part of that is building our capacity to be able to sustain this into the future. And so that's where we really have to rely on each other as committed partners to see it through to the end, to actually see those changes, and then come back in three years and collect the data again.
Mr. Owens.
So my recollection is that this organization has done something similar in other cities, including cities in Illinois. Can we just be given an example of how that, what that process looked like, what conclusions were drawn, and what sorts of policies or programs were implemented to address those?
Sure. In your folders last week, I gave you a handout of usage in, in Illinois, but we actually have collected about five different pages of usage in just the first two communities we were with. The process really begins with identifying who's at the table, who's not at the table, who needs to come together to have a true community conversation. And then over the course of the first year, it's us building our partnership together. There, there are monthly meetings where we are engaging in conversations around data collection, contextual data pieces to overlay on top of the vulnerability maps, preparing for data collection with the teachers, identifying additional customized questions. This is a data set, bless you. Where we come into the community, it's not meant to start a completely new initiative, but to enhance current initiatives that are already happening. We already know the noise that happens in many different communities with all different entities coming in with new things happening, and that's really not what this is meant to do, it's meant to come and enhance the current, the current initiatives. But then, part of this whole first year of the process is building those partnerships, ensuring that people are coming to the table, having conversations, being a part of that process is also part of the buy-in. And having many people come and talk and have discussions, community discussions, leading up to the data release. Data release is then presented back to the community after the pilot team has aligned their messaging and had a strong commitment to each other, but also discussing who will be those key spokespeople. This is the, the community's data. It's not Erickson's data, it is the community's data. So we help build the capacity of the team players and how to go out and identify the important maps for the various meetings and have discussions. And during that, during the data release process with, with the aligned messaging, they'll be out in the community gathering contextual pieces that really are of importance to, that make sense for the data. So, for example, going into Greater East St. Louis, one, a, a community member came up to me right when we started and said, you know, our kids are all in high poverty, the entire community. What happens when your, your map comes back and you're going to see nothing but one color, all high vulnerability? Should we even engage in this process? He said, you know what, let's go through the process, let's do this. The map came back and there was extreme vulnerability. And I brought it back to the teachers and I said, wow, look at your map, this is fantastic. And the teachers looked at me and were like, yeah, we know this, these are our students, we know they're doing well. But then I brought it back to that same person from the very beginning, who was a person that was a little skeptical from the beginning, and that person had a hard time recognizing that the children were doing so well, because they said, well, they're all in high poverty, they have high needs. This is not saying that the children didn't have additional needs, but it is recognizing that there are strengths and that there are vulnerabilities, and we had to take a deeper look. Also taking a look at those same maps, we were able to look at social competence and emotional maturity, which really pick apart how a child functions in a structured setting versus an unstructured setting. What we were able to see is that there were higher vulnerabilities in a structured setting, and teachers, we brought it back to the teachers and they said, this data rings true with us because they have a hard time in our classrooms because our children have high trauma. However, we know that they are stronger in emotional maturity because they are functioning at a higher level at home in an unstructured setting because they are parents to siblings or taking care of other family members. This rang true to us. Knowing these contextual pieces with the data was, was able to help guide programming and conversations in the Family and Community Engagement Center. They brought in a social-emotional teacher to help guide some of these important conversations, specifically around some of the subdomains that focus not just on like a social-emotional curriculum, but that went right into the different domains. For example, in a structured setting, what we're looking at is respect and responsibility and, and relationships with adults. So they were able to focus their programming around some of the specific learning areas that those children needed. So that was part of some programmatic areas, but also thinking about the referral process and the community and the vulnerability. They were able to connect with a local judge of five different counties to start building up the referral process between the early learning partnership and the juvenile justice courts to start developing better policy lens. Thinking about Oak Park, they're about to release their data set as well, but what they have noticed is that they weren't just looking at vulnerability, they wanted to take a look at the children that were at, at risk as well as vulnerability, and they were, they were able to see throughout their community, even though they are an affluent community, they were able to see that vulnerability exists in all areas. So that was part of their process and part of what their policy design is leading to. Is that?
Most of what you talked about is what the school district did internally and just echoing what I think some of the other board members were talking about. This, this is actually one of my concerns, so we're spending $200,000 or being asked to spend $200,000 of school district money. This will be viewed, I think, as a school district initiative, but we're really talking about, and what I thought I heard, is engaging the community. And so can you give me an example of where a community has gotten involved and used a study like this to really affect policy change or institute new programs or, or focus programs that they've, they've currently got?
So the Success by Six of Cankey County, the collaboration that led the initiative between Bradley Bourbonet and Cankey Key has taken, taken the data to, they created a policy memo. Part of what we do at Erickson, we also have an early childhood leadership academy and we reserve spaces for community members, specifically directors in the early childhood fields and other key members of the community, superintendents, law enforcement, state senators, to gain cutting-edge research on early childhood development, but also how to create a policy memo, building the capacity around community members and taking the data and moving it into policy. So one of the pieces coming out of Success by Six is how they created a local policy memo around early intake, aligned intake and referral. They're also, they're also trying to, at the moment, part of their strategic plan is to create an Office of the Young Child for the community, where they can do an aligned intake process throughout the entire community. They've used the data sets to identify best areas to place family and community engagement centers, and these are all community-based centers to really support that. The medical, the hospital, there's a couple hospitals that came together around the data to apply for the Infant Mental Health Initiative, the 2.0 SUN grant for the state, and they were able to, they were awarded a $200,000 planning, planning grant with 2.3 million over the next four years, five years, five years, to implement that for the community. So they're using the data in different ways, but they're all aligning it with, through the lens of transforming the community into a trauma-sensitive and trauma-informed community between Bradley Bourbonet and Cankey Key collectively.
Okay. Mr. Segal.
I think we can all agree that at some point in all of our lives, our favorite person was a kindergarten teacher. So my trust is there.
Miss, Miss Archibald was mine at Summer, at Somerdale. Okay.
Barb Cole.
Okay. Just a few years ago.
Yeah. So, I'm not going to bag on their ability to gather data. But it does occur to me that the 103 questions they're going to answer in regard to each of their kindergarten students is going to drive database decisions that will be made for the subsequent three years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Once those answers have been collected, they will be cleaned and scrubbed and sanitized and made shiny. Will somebody between the process of scrubbing? Will somebody between the process of scrubbing or between collecting and scrubbing, take a look at that data and just put a second set of eyes on it, verify it? Not that I distrust kindergarten teachers, but I think as teachers, they're feeling a certain sense of stress and pull to get a lot of things done. And while there's going to be time made for them to answer these questions, you, you were talking about a lot of answering the same question over and over. I think there's going to be some inherent traps in that sort of a process. They're going to be answering questions that are going to drive action on these kids' homes. And I'm gonna bring up a thing about that in a minute. But there's a lot of things that are gonna be touched in the community by this data that is, uh, collected by, by the kindergarten teachers. So I'm hoping that there's gonna be some sort of a, a, a backup view of the answers.
So, um, I'll speak to the process to prepare them if you wanna speak to what happens after. Um, the process to prepare them includes a two-hour training, um, with kind of a gradual release, um, from, you know, modeling from the Erickson team, um, doing some practice questions and then sending teachers. Um, we're going to divide it over five days, so we have a reasonable group of teachers. We have eighty-seven kindergarten classrooms, so we'll divide it up over an entire week. Um, so that we have small groups working with Erickson's team on site, so that we're able to offer support as they're entering data. Um, that said, teachers also do have the option, instead of being pulled away from instruction and having a sub provided for the day, it's one day, um, they could also opt to be paid a stipend for a total of six hours of work. The first two hours of that work are the same mandatory trainings that the teachers with the sub would also require. Um, so there's kind of some level-setting, some practice, some getting into the instrument to know how to handle, um, data entry that will be expected for every teacher who engages in the process. Um, do you wanna speak to the, the backend question?
Sure, um, I think it's, it, actually, this is a, a question that comes up often about, uh, the teachers, um, and, and how they're going to be answering, uh, the questions. I think inherently, teachers want to, uh, give the best response for their children. Um, and if we think about a lot of the assessments that, that teachers have to do, think about all the various individual assessments, thinking about observation-based assessments, this is also, um, another, uh, we could question those as well, as if there's another set of eyes on that type of data. But what I, what we wanna make sure is that the training is sound. Um, and when we, we have an extensive manual that goes question by question, cultural sensitivity flags and notes, um, to ensure that. And we walk through each question, um, within that first two hours, ensure that they have technical assistance. And for those teachers that receive a stipend, they also get that technical assistance at night and on the weekends in case there is any additional question that they, that does come up. Um, so, we do, we do put, um, all of this on to our teachers. And, you know, I think a lot of it depends on the process leading up to the completion of the tool, ensuring that the teachers know what's coming from the onset, that there are plenty of discussions and orientation, so that they don't feel, once, you know, it's not, hey, welcome to January, we have another thing for you to do. Um, but really having those discussions on how the community will be able to support them um, with their, um, with their, uh, responses to the questionnaires for each child and how inherently, um, the community can come together, hope, uh, to create programs and policies, system development, to, in time, see stronger children and family coming into their classrooms. So, once teachers are able to see that and have these conversations, they typically get really into the conversation and say, you know, this is a really interesting, different tool, we haven't used something like this. We have a, a, a lot of different feedback from over eight hundred different teachers. And we'd be happy to share some of those responses as well.
The second part of that was, we unfortunately have, um, something of a flighty school district, I think much more flighty than, I think mobile is the word, uh, than average, where the data that's going to be collected by the kindergarten teachers, that's going to become the foundation for actions taken in the community over three years, is going to, I would imagine, be affected by the significant mobility, where it's not just kids going from one school to another, but kids, kids leaving the community, new kids coming in. And the conditions of neighborhoods change quite a bit. I mean, I guess just, we did this, but if we look at the neighborhood around Kishawaki School, I would imagine that data collected on students who were there last year would end up being not very helpful now, since that neighborhood is largely empty. So, I guess I'm a little concerned about, um, mobility rate, you know? And also, you know, as, as housing is under a significant, um, or is in kind of a state of flux now, um, where populations are moving out of one neighborhood and into another somewhat wholesale, it would seem like that data could then not necessarily go with them.
I think that's the power of the community collaborations coming together. They have their ear to the ground, um, boots on the ground, they know what's happening in the community. And to be able to continually have community forums and discussions around where we are with the data at different points, um, to help to continue to shape, um, strategic plans. Strategic plans are typically living documents that need to be, um, reviewed and, and continually worked with. So, I think that that's where the strength of the multiple entities that come to the table and all of the, um, manpower around it, coming together and continuing that conversation on a regular basis. And that's definitely part of that ongoing process.
My last question is, are you also looking at the kindergarten, uh, classrooms of the parochial schools? And is, that's going to be aggregated with the data that our kindergarten teachers collect?
So this is a pulse check on all children at, um, in kindergarten across the entire community. So, pending, uh, board approval, then the next piece will be out and working and, and communicating with the various parochial charter schools in the area that have kindergarten classrooms to partake in the, in the process together and come to the table, um, as a voice at the pilot team as well. But it really is meant to see where all children are at. And because once the data is collected, it is then, um, tied back to the child's address, which is within a census tract. And then private information is wiped and then we get a full view of what's happening, um, as far as vulnerability within census tracts. So it's not by schools or school district, it is by census tract. So that's where the community is taking that look overall.
I just wanna clarify that participation of private and parochial schools is voluntary. We, we would ask them to participate, it's their decision if they choose to participate, so.
It isn't ask, it's invite.
Okay, but there's no, do you cost share by them?
No.
Okay.
No, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, did I laugh at that?
Not, not that that's necessarily a problem for me, and the, better the quality of the data we have to work with, obviously the happier we should be. But, uh, what, I lied, I had one more question. What do you think is the likelihood that you're gonna get full participation on a volunteer basis from these parochial schools?
Matthew wants to answer that one.
Yeah, it's my job, it's my job to get them on board. So I think we're gonna get full participation from the Diocese Schools, from Rockford Lutheran, probably from Rockford Christian, from all three of the secular private schools. I don't think that'll be a problem. I will have to ask, um, and push hard on some of the LCMS and Baptist Schools, but I hope some of them will participate as well. I think we'll get the vast majority of private and parochial students, um, who will participate. Because those schools and the churches that they're part of have community-minded missions. They're gonna see the value in this and their students and the community as a whole.
Are they going to insist upon stipends?
It's part of the contract.
And so we'll pay the stipends for the-
You pay Erickson, it comes out of the Erickson, is that right?
Yeah.
All right, I, I have two questions, I think they're Heidi questions, but, um, I'm- Uh, okay. Okay. No?
Our, our incentive was sub or stipend, but we're subsidized $100,000 by year. That's not really our, I mean, yet, children are-
Okay.
Right, 'cause that's our $200,000.
So their stipends come out of a hundred that are-
I see, okay.
Yes, that's correct, it's not, yeah, right.
Yeah, I know, I, 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 so the, so the $200,000 worth paying also includes the stipends being below-
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
I have two, I have two concern, one. I just wanna sh-
Somebody wanna say that on a, on a bike for anybody listening?
Yeah.
Uh, so, what, I believe what you said was the $200,000 that we're investing includes sub and stipend. The answer is yes.
Okay.
For RPS teachers.
Right, right, that, right.
And the second part was, the Erickson-
And the second part was the stipend for private school will come from the Erickson contribution.
Right.
You're welcome.
I, I am a little worried about the burden we're gonna be asking our teachers. So I just wanna, so we've got eighty-seven kindergarten teachers, something like that? And they all have about twenty-three students, somewhere like that?
Maximum of twenty-four.
So they would have to do twenty-three surveys each?
Correct.
And it's a hundred and ninety-three questions?
A hundred and three.
Hundred and three, okay, all right.
It just feels like a hundred and ninety-three.
On average, on average, it takes fifteen minutes per time.
Okay. The, the other one is about costs and because this is a heavy cost for the district, I'm assuming we have the money if we were, if we're even talking about it. Uh, but, um, I, I'm just wondering if there has ever been any thought about asking for financial support from other organizations like the Community Foundation or United Way or the City of Rockford or anything like that? Even if it was some token amount that would give them some skin in the game, I guess that's my question.
It's probably a good question for me to answer. We chose to take a strategy that we wanted to use, be, we really wanted to fund the data gathering so that we keep the community resources free to solve the problems. And, and we felt like that was our contribution. We, it really is our stu- our teachers that are, uh, taking time to collect the data and we wanted to have control of that part of the process. Bec- and we also wanted, um, other taxing bodies or other nonprofits unencumbered with the cost so that we could go all in on the solutions. You know, we have so many groups that wanna help. And often, that help comes in very ineffective and unfocused ways, not because people are lacking in good intentions, but because we lack something as comprehensive as this, uh, Erickson proposal. And so we, we think the power of this will be, um, community groups coming forward with, um, the full backing of their resources. I think grants and other things may come out of the recognition of the data. So, we felt like this was our opportunity to show good faith and to lead as a district and to frankly better position our community partners to help in a way that actually will help. So that was the way I viewed it and that's why I felt like getting this proposal going this year, showing the urgency to address it. I mean, you know, later today, you're gonna see a presentation, uh, from Dr. Munson and, and Mrs. Detman about our data. And one of the things that you're gonna see in that presentation is how hard it is and how much growth it takes for a student to move from third grade to eighth grade proficiency at the mat. There, we're literally gonna show you what growth percentile it takes to, to get there. And I think what we're saying here is, if this gives us a chance to move the needle on kindergarten readiness and ultimately third grade readiness, um, in the long run, and that community support will actually help a lot more than what it has, uh, because it can be targeted in ways that our community, our neighborhoods need. And there's a precision to the diag- to the diagnosis that just isn't there right now because we paint with a really broad brush as a community right now. Um, I, I think this could, thi- this could have tremendous return on investment and has the potential to be a real game changer. So we felt it was important for the district to own this portion of it. And we fully expect the community to, uh, ha- has shown in the past a willingness to be generous with time and dollars around winning initiatives. But we think it's important that we show the way.
Okay, great answer. Um, I, the other part, I just wanna make a comment and it's just a personal comment. The whole reason why I got on the school board in 2011 was not just to make our school district better, but to make our community better. That, that's why I got on, I really felt that I could maybe help in some way to make our community better. So this discussion about a focused effort involving multiple community partners to try to make our community better just kinda really excites me, so, that's, that's my, two cents.
I, I share your passion. I'm, I'm really energized by the, the passion and commitment of our team, um, even in the, the beginning phases of this. There's some real momentum, um, that we have as a group and I think it's pretty amazing.
Cool, Mr. Connor, you're now on the floor.
Okay. Uh, one quick question as a follow-up. In addition to the, um, private schools, are we gonna reach out to homeschoolers?
So, I believe that, um, part of our targeted, uh, since there are dozens of additional private schools, thinking about, um, we, we need an eighty percent saturation rate of the kindergarten students across the, um, community, which is reached with the public schools, but to have, we want to make sure that we can get as many as possible. Part of what we do is put out confidential school reports, um, to every school that has more than two kindergarten classrooms. So part of our strategy in, in bringing, um, the private and parochial schools on board is to identify those with multiple classrooms, um, now, and as many extra, uh, schools that want to join. The homeschoolers, I think what would be very hard to do is to, um, have, uh, a trained kindergarten- homeschoolers are essentially the parents, so then that brings them a different, um, lens to the data. So we're typically just looking at private charter, parochial and the public school system.
Well, the only thing I'd point out is that there are some rather large homeschool associations. I think it would be worthwhile for us to reach out to the homeschoolers to see if they would like to be a part 'cause even though they, parents do act in that role, they actually do have group activities. So I think, um, it would seem to me that reaching out to that community would make sense.
Some of the partners in our work include the Discovery Center and the White, by MCI who do a lot of work with homeschool communities and some of those groups. You know, they'll, they'll get together and they'll do things at those programs. There may be a way through our partners to reach and do some of that too.
Just to remind them, um, a couple of things. Number one, it is a good idea, we always worry about costs for obvious reasons and having long-term commitment to this. So, the one comment is I think that conceptually, I, I'm not hearing a lot of issues, but I know a lot of us worry about implementation and almost more so for a follow-up. So what I would say is that this is one where it has a lot of potential, but I think the commitment to this has to be pretty solid year after year for this to really make sense for us. The, um, the questions I have, as I said, are really around implementation and I think you've answered this to a good extent. I think the only question I've got-
We have a visual representation of our private and public school.
I'm sorry. Okay. Is, uh, because we do have a large amount of individuals involved in this, is I do appreciate the approach of having subsets and then having Erickson, I assume, be involved with all that. I think having the standardization of the answers is really kind of where I'd say, do we assume that there's a literal oversight as the teachers actually administer this? Or is this an after the fact? So that standardization is my question. How do I know if I've got a hundred and three questions across eighty-seven teachers plus however many others we've got that the way they're having those questions answered is similar? Because you know the teachers are answering this, um, obviously not the students as such.
Yes, um, however, that's where the, um, really intentional and intense training- Yes, however, that's where the really intentional and intense training comes into play. And so that's, that's really the foundation is the training on the tool at the front end.
I understand that.
Which is required for every teacher before data collection.
The tool is a valid and reliable tool. And in addition, the teachers do have the option to answer for each question, I don't know, or not respond. And if there are too many of those, then the whole record is considered not valid and not used in the final piece. So we do have a process as it has been across Canada and across the United States for many years.
I mean, I would just say that implementation on these, even with the training, seems to me that this would be not easy to pull off. So as long as we have some community partners up there, how do they intend to approach getting all parts of the community engaged in this? Because I assume that there's parts of the community that are more difficult than others and I don't have a real sense of how we would get them engaged.
So as Matthew had said, kind of in the beginning, we have about, we sent down an email message asking for our pilot team, about like forty-seven people onboard, leaders within the communities, nonprofits, healthcare, from the justice system to our local government, to folks on the board as well, to be a part of this initiative. So far, we've had about thirty, thirty folks who have responded to us and said, yes, we are committed to being part of this. We have folks from United Way, Y M C A, Y W C A, folks of those natures. And so what we are hoping to do when we talk about implementing, I know that's a big, big concern, we have all this data, what do we do? I am a data junkie, so this is singing to my ears that now alignment has, especially through our Healthy Starts team, we have a focus. We have data that actually justifies a lot of the initiatives and the solutions that we're trying to work on, our Healthy Starts team, to help to drive, to drive those changes. And so what we're going to be using, like I said before, is using our alignment teams and this pilot team and our huge network, not only that we have within alignment volunteers, but also with Transfrom Rockford to help to drive these focused solutions. And so from that, through our tactical planning process, we always come out with outputs and outcomes, something that's measurable, that we can then report back on to this team on a regular basis on the progress of all of those solutions. So just to kind of want to leverage that.
Yeah, and I just want to add that we'll, you know, from Transfrom Rockford perspective, you know, partnering with Alignment Rockford, really respecting the Alignment Rockford process. We have our process as well as an organization from engagement, alignment, project support. So our staff team is ready, volunteers, we actually have one project team, as I mentioned before, Great Neighborhoods, particularly when we start to get into, you know, further in the process of engaging directly in neighborhoods, those with lived experiences, those are the kind of resources that we are committed to. I just wanted to say that very clear, very committed to this process and committed for the long haul, knowing that this is a long haul, we'll have to redo the data, collect the data in three years. I won't say hold us to top twenty-five by 2025, but hold us there because, I mean, this is part of the transformation of our community. So I just want you to know that we are committed to partnering with Alignment Rockford and you as a school district and other community partners.
This question is probably for Dr. Jared, is what's the actual geographical boundaries of this effort?
We are all chuckling back here because we've had an incredible chain of emails over the last couple of days.
Thank you for answering that because I know you.
You're welcome. Yes, 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 I got you.
She wasn't there, I didn't hear.
So we've, we've had lots of conversation over the last several days defining those boundaries and probably Matthew if you want to speak to that.
I'm a bit of a geography nut. So the question is, this, the district is larger than the city.
Yes, it is.
So we went back and forth, we're talking about the kids who live in the area that is served by the district, what we call that. Wester eventually said, just call it Rockford and let's keep it simple. So we're keeping it simple, we're talking about the kids who live in the bounds served by Rockford Public Schools, whether or not they attend the schools. The point of this, as Jackman keeps reminding us.
And whether or not they're in the city.
Yeah, some of them are not in the city, that's right. We don't want to say that we're talking about Rockford Public Schools because that puts the burden back only on the schools as providing interventions. We want to say we're talking about community work. The city is a huge partner, but we've also got folks from the county and we're going to be talking to folks in the other municipalities that are part of this work together.
That's, okay. I'm glad to hear that because I know that those communities worry about being left out, so I think that's terribly important. I think the last thing is you had mentioned, actually two points, sorry. One is you had mentioned summer, is this going to go over and affect potentially programs for summertime?
That could be an outcome based on what our, our data suggests. Our work this summer is as a team to engage in strategic planning around the data.
All right, but I just wondered if that included the impact on the students. So this is just from my own understanding, this came about from this third grade focus. In a sense, even though early childhood, zero to five is the clear focus, it sounds like, which for us frankly was a gap, is kind of, even though it's throughout their entire career, academic career, third grade seems to be kind of a focus on this. Because that seemed to be, if I remember our discussion, a downturn for results and there's been some criticism of early childhood. All you have to do is Google this, which I did, and there's a lot of criticism that says that, why do the early childhood, because by third grade, the effects tend to wear off. So I wondered if this was purposeful to say, let's make sure that we're doing something to reinforce that, so that.
I'll hearken back to the predictability factor here in that when we gather data at this point in time in a child's life, we can predict rather accurately what their outcomes will be in third and fourth grade. And we know that that's a pivotal time in a child's life. And so the pieces really do all fit together. And I'd like to reiterate that this work is systemic and generational. So will we see a reversal of all trends in three years? No, we won't, but we'll be able to see that we're on a different trajectory than we have been in the past.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm all for this, but implementation is always the deal. Go ahead.
Sometimes I extend the conversation longer than necessary. Kim can tell you more about that drop to third grade, that a lot of the reason that you see that, even with early childhood success and then some kids don't sustain it, the national studies make that really clear, that that is about those home-based factors. Yeah, there's a lot of teaching and Heidi and her team are doing some great curriculum, literacy interventions that should produce results, but a lot of that drop from K to three is home-based factors that they can't sustain the level of growth that you're expecting. So if we can make those interventions in the neighborhoods for kindergarten students, we should see better results.
Thank you all, any further follow-up questions? Okay, thank you Heidi.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you all for being here. All right. Michelle, are you next? Michelle one or Michelle two? Oh, okay, all right, okay. Tax levy.
Yes, this is really just a follow-up conversation from what we brought forward in September on the 2018 tax levy. I am bringing this forward a little bit earlier than what we've done in the past because I want this to align with our budget preparation, which has, we had a budget workshop yesterday for kickoff for next year. So the problem that we have right now is we have to make a decision on the 2018 tax levy. We did have some good news, we went through the E A V and the E A V increased 4.1%.
Oh, yay.
I get excited.
Correlates about, correlates directly with the tax rate. We also had new property of 3.6 million. The downside, of course, we have increasing costs year over year because of salary increases and other increases. The background in the E A V, I just thought it was worth mentioning, I found a really good visual on the direct correlation between E A V and the tax rate. So I just wanted to really share that with you for some background information for those of you that may have not have seen this in the past. So here's the picture of that. So you can see in the bottom row, you have E A V and the tax rate. So the left-hand side, you have E A V, which we experienced this last, you know, eight years excluding the last couple of years where the tax rate rose because of the decline in E A V. So now we're seeing the reverse where the E A V is going up, not quite like that, but we are seeing a decrease in the tax rate because of that and us holding the line on the tax rate. So then this is what we've shared with you during the budget process and this is just the graph of it's slowly going up, but again, we had that 4% increase from 2017 to 2018. So we have some options. We can take new property with a tax levy, we can take new property plus CPI, we can do CPI only, or we can do no new property or CPI and hold it as we have in the past several years. I also broke out the operating tax rate, I didn't do this the last presentation, but I thought it was just interesting to just break this out. So you can see the operating tax rate is what we're really talking about tonight. And then the total tax levy rate includes our bonds and interest. So right now for 2017, we're at 7.6496 and then for 2018 with no CPI, we'd be at 7.35. And you can see as we go down, Mr. Rollins has talked about getting below 7%. So you can see on this first column at 0%, we would get below seven in 2021. So the solution that we have to come up with and the impact of our decision is really the tax rate. Our decision today affects the tax rate and the property tax revenue for the district and that is 35% of our district's revenue. Again, I have the scenarios, I listed them here, I won't read through those, but this is what we've included in your, for your reference and we included this last time that we talked about this. We have 0% and flat and then 1% and then we have a 2.1% with flat evidence-based funding. And then our last scenario, which is what we're leaning towards, would be the 0% CPI with a 5% increase. And what this does, when you look at 2020, we've talked about building this into our budget. So basically with the assumptions that we've built in during this model, we've built in what our salary increases are based on our contracts that we approved last year. So you really are essentially looking at where we are sitting today with our budget and looking at, you know, what we believe would be the, you know, a good assumption of the 5% increase in evidence-based funding. So it goes up slightly, for our fund balance goes up slightly there. In the previous slides, it ranges for a $6 million decrease to a $1 million decrease and then this slide does show a slight increase of about $994,000. So the return on investment, the reason that we do this is resource allocation, which is goal five. So we really want to make sure that we are allocating our resources to close the achievement gap and to support our children. So we went through the effect on the E A V, E A V fluctuation over the past recent years and the tax rate and the changes in fund balance. So what we're looking to do tonight is really have the conversation and really get action on how to move forward with this tax levy and so we can bring it forward to board next week. Any questions?
Jared? Just to jump in, I want to thank Michelle and Michelle and the team for putting all this data together. Administration is very clear in our recommendation that we offer forward a flat levy to maximize the tax relief for the community. We've been fortunate that the state has really turned the corner over the last two fiscal years in passing evidence-based funding. We feel like we are in a position where we can course correct in future levies if for whatever reason the state loses its support for evidence-based funding. For example, if that zero, so what we're recommending is the 0% CPI, 5% increase evidence-based funding as, as what we base our assumptions on. If however, the 5% does not come to fruition during the next fiscal year or at any point, we can always then in future levy years make a, make a change, but we are very resounding in our support for a flat levy. We're thrilled to see that multiple community partners have done that as well. And I think it's really powerful to see that with 4.1% growth, that we are actually going to actually be able to decrease our tax rate by approximately 30 cents, which is a big step in the right direction. Our peak rate was 793, this will bring it down 60 cents from that peak rate. And it just shows the importance of the discipline the board has shown for six, five, for the first five fiscal years that we helped line the levy, the board really just prevented things from getting worse and that's hard to explain. But what's really exciting about this year with 4.1% growth, you get to really see a big jump down in the rate in one year, a 30 cent decrease. And I just want to compliment the board for your continued vigilance in this area and we are very, very confident that this is the right recommendation to keep the levy flat for one more year, that we can still make the strategic investments we need to make to improve, to continue our progress, to make better investments in our schools through the budgeting process, to support the board's focus on student achievement. But we feel like this has to continue to be a focus as well, to attract and retain families in our community.
And one more thing to point out is you can see the blue line and I didn't really go into this too much because we did show this at the last meeting when we presented, is the fund balance. So you can see the 25% of expenses is our policy and that is the fund balance, you can see that we're above that.
Okay, Mr. Segal, you were first, I believe.
Yeah, I think you said that one of the options was to, you know, take new property.
Yes.
Can you explain what that means to me?
Well, it wouldn't be, there's different definitions of a flat tax levy. So if you, and people view it differently. So when you have a flat tax levy, you can say that we want the tax rate flat, but we'll take the new property that enters the district. When we have growth in the district, right now, we're not taking that, so we do not take that additional money on the, on the new property that comes into the district, which basically means that we're not taking that extra money that we could.
If new property is added to the, so let me just jump in for you. So there's 3.6 million projected in new property, so that would essentially be added to the 155 million we're collecting, so we would collect about 158 million or so. I think what Michelle and the team are proposing is that would be an option, but our preferred option in the scenario we're rolling out here is keeping the actual receipts flat at 155 million so as to maximize tax relief. If you take that 3.6 million dollars, you, you would get a third of the value of that in dollars, but I think in this assumption, Michelle, we are, Mrs. Jared, we are not including that, we are talking about a flat assumption, correct?
Yes, we are talking about a flat assumption.
Mr. Rollins?
Actually, I have the same question, so that's answered, thank you. The only other comment I've got is I agree with the administration's recommendation and one of the things that I'd point out is that we're viewed as, well, we are the largest part of the taxing bill, we're 52%, and so people watch pretty closely what we do and the other taxing bodies look pretty closely at what we do. And I can say with a fair degree of confidence that once we start increasing our levy, that's going to give cover for all of the other taxing bodies to start increasing their levies and it's going to have a snowball effect. So the longer we can hold the line on the levy, I think the better off we'll be.
Mr. Connor?
I want to make sure I understand a couple of things. Number one, on the assumptions of 0 CPI and 5% increase, we don't control that 5%, you're just showing the numbers as though that was going to happen. And it sounds like, because we don't actually vote on it, I just want to make it clear, these are only scenarios. But I did wonder, did I hear you say that you thought 5%?
That's what our, that's what our assumption is, that's what we're using. For evidence-based funding, we, for general state aid, we had gotten 6% increase, we don't think it's going to be as high as that, we took it down to 5%. We may not get that, but we will need to adjust, like Dr. Jared has stated, that we have to adjust at that point.
Okay, because when you look at the end number, I mean, if you take the last chart where 0 CPI and 5%, you do see an increase in the red line, obviously. And if that doesn't happen now, it says flat, rather than nice to have seen like one that was like 2% or something like that, just as a, just to show the difference. But I assume if I look at the 0, 0, if you will, that if it's a couple percent, it's still going to go down and it's material because you have in 19, it's still 125, but then in 2020, it's just a little over 119, right? So if I hear the approach, and I will be honest, since we'll just be voting on this now, I mean, one of the options, or the two options we had talked about originally are 0 and 1%, in either case, the rate does go down, it just doesn't go down. In either case, the rate does go down, it just doesn't go down as much. And I'm totally with Mr. Rollins' concern that if we were to do the 1%, it would give cover. That's, that I think is a very strong argument. I think the only thing I want to say is that one of the concerns we've had is not being able to make up. And if we have less than 5% from the state is presuming we took 0% CPI, I'd be just curious, you know, if, say again, it was a couple percentage points and we took 0% this year, what would those numbers look like in terms of the net result? Because if I look at 2020 and 2021, those numbers go down quite a bit.
Assume 1.34 million per percent approximately. Because that's what the number is. But that'll change as the total dollar amount changes. And again, when you use these multi-year projections, we would not allow that. If we got a zero year, then we would look at cutting expenses or looking at other sources of revenue from the state. But we are operating, Michelle went through a very elaborate process to look at the last two years to see where we're at. She is also going to test the assumptions under the evidence-based funding formula to determine where we're likely to land. And we will make course corrections in April or May if we get some really bad news. But we are going to be very closely monitoring what the state decides to do. And we still have time to make adjustments in the following fiscal year. I think we have a strong enough reserve position. You can see the blue line there and that points to our board policy. We couldn't do enough damage in one fiscal year to arrest that, but it would be a harder climb for sure.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, as you well know from my comments in the past, I'm all for the 0% CPI. I think the one cautionary note I've got is that, and don't want to give cover for any other organizations, but we have to look at the realistic costs that we have. And if I hear correctly on medical costs, we actually, I mean, that has gone up. We do have new contracts. We're going to have a lot of pressure. So I think the one thing I'll say is that, you know, we really have to look at the school district and what our needs are. And tonight's a good example from my point of view is that if we improve, if we on the one hand say that the achievement levels have to go up, that to my ears translates to money. And so I'm just going to say, I'm, you know, I am totally for the 0% CPI. I just want to say that, you know, we're going to have to look seriously at a year from now, assuming we take that and the impact on the achievement. You know, because the case could be made, had we put more money in, we might be in a better position. And that is something that from a criticism standpoint, you do hear. So I would just say that while I'm in favor of this, this is really, we're going to have to take a good, hard look at where we want to be as a board and the results we want with our students.
Michelle did, excuse me, Michelle did correct me. There is new property built into this model. We did send out five, we told last time we had five models that were sent out. So we, I mean, we could pull up additional models, but they're probably, I'm not sure if there's necessary at this point.
No, it's not necessary. The only, if you do it as an addendum, that would be wonderful just for me. I like to see it. It's one of those where rather than having to calculate numbers or doing things.
So we just need to be really transparent about what we're doing. My recommendation would be that we present the option with a truly flat levy and utilize that additional property tax relief as our primary recommendation. But we could give the board both options to consider. But as, I will not be at the next meeting, but my recommendation is to, is to maximize the tax relief in this budget cycle.
Mr. Rollins?
I would never say this in an actual board meeting, but there's nobody listening at this point. There's actually, I disagree with the notion that it takes money to lead to student achievement or increase student achievement. And there's actual, not only national studies, but international studies that show that there's no correlation between the amount that you spend on per pupil and student achievement. Once you, once you hit a baseline, internationally, once you hit a baseline, there's really no correlation after that baseline.
To me, that's, then I'll push right back and say, I say those kinds of stats are not what is at stake here. I never brought up pure pupil, which is a general statistic. What I'm saying is there are targeted programs that I think we're going to want. And let's just say it this way, I don't see our costs for staffing going down. And, or any other cost. So I'm perfectly willing for us to look at cuts. All I'm saying is I, I think, and I'm willing to stand by this one, that most of the things we want to do probably will take some kind of funding for us to implement. And I, you know, there's just so many holes in some of these national stats that, you know, but the fact is, I'm looking at Rockford RPS to say the kinds of things that we are trying to do. Because the cuts, I, I hope we get things like the operational part. And it seems that way. It's going to get more efficient, but we still have a ton of contracts. We still have overhead. That continues to go up. That would be my point. So I'm not looking at it macroeconomically. I'm looking at us and all I'm saying is that we have to be reasonable that the kinds of things that we may want to do, because there may be other special programs. I mean, this whole Ericson thing, who knows what's going to come out of that and the kinds of recommendations and the kinds of things pointedly for early childhood, which we get through grants right now, right? I mean, all I'm saying is I am not hearing less price tags for us as RPS. I appreciate the numbers on per pupil and that just throwing money at it doesn't do it. But, you know, my gut check is the kinds of things that we might have to have for intervention and all that's going to cost.
If I could briefly play the role of peacemaker as the elder parent in my family. Both things are true. We're funded at 61% adequacy. That's why we're first in line to get funding from the state of Illinois. But Illinois has relied way too much on local property taxpayers to fund education. With this proposal and this assumption, we are counting on the state of Illinois to continue to do the right thing and shift the burden off our local taxpayers while still giving us enough to move towards our adequacy target. We could move there faster or we could move towards tax relief quicker. From an administrative perspective, this is the best balance of the two. We want people to want to live here and to own homes here and to keep businesses here and to not protest their taxes. And to grow the value of property is a long game, so we have more resources for education. So I think that is an important perspective. But Mr. Connor, to your point, we are at 61% adequacy. Over the last two fiscal years, the state has made a dent in that, but we are still in the lowest tier of funding adequacy in the state of Illinois. So you are also correct that we have to continue to rely on additional investments from the state. We believe this is a good middle path because it shifts the burden away from local taxpayers, but still funds the schools closer towards the adequacy level. The second the state moves away from that commitment, we'll have to look at other strategies and have tougher conversations. But we are uniquely positioned in this particular fiscal year despite very, very significant labor and cost increases to pull this off for one year. But Ms. Jarr has been very clear that if we don't get that 5%, we'll have to have a different conversation next year. But I think this is a great opportunity to do it. And I will also add our example matters. The city's levy is projected to drop by 18 cents. So you had our 30 cents with their 18 cents. We're at about a dollar of tax relief over the last three years, which I hope will actually lead to greater growth and the opportunity to better fund our schools in the long run and make Rockford an attractive place and our footprint an attractive place to be. So I think you're both, you both have very valid points. There's my peacemaker role for the night.
I think you could take, the takeaway for you, Michelle, is that the board is in favor of supporting the recommendation from administration on holding the line on flat tax rate.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stepman, you're back up. Strategic update for goal one.
Hello again. So we are, I am presenting this evening really just to focus on our three key metrics, ELS, kids, and MAP. And those are the metrics that I'm able to provide data on at this particular point in time, knowing that on November 6th, you'll get the full report on achievement as well. If you recall, we're currently under embargo with our preliminary state data. So this data really gives us a snapshot in time right now with three key metrics. I'm going to begin, as I always do, with the Early Learning Scale. The Early Learning Scale, as you'll remember, is an observation-based assessment. It is specifically used in our early childhood program. It is aligned to our school scorecard. I'll show you those metrics in a moment. And it provides indicators of readiness for kindergarten and is aligned with the kids' assessment, which is the Kindergarten Individual Development Survey. As a reminder, these are our strategic goals directly from the school scorecard. First, a goal in literacy. We want 80% of our four-year-olds enrolled in our EC program to achieve a score of three or higher on the Early Learning Scale specifically for item eight, which is phonological awareness by the winter assessment. In numeracy, we want the same goal, but in item one, numbers and numerical operations. And then additionally, for a social-emotional goal, for item five, self-regulation. And so these are the metrics that I'll be sharing with you here this evening. Last year, we established a baseline in all three, phonological awareness, numbers and numerical operations, and self-regulation. The dark red shows what our baseline was in the fall of 2017. And the light red shows where we are right now in establishing that baseline. This is not a growth comparison between two cohorts of children. It's simply a report on the fall baseline of 2017 and a fall baseline in 2018. And so you can see there is a slight decrease in where we're starting. It does not necessarily mean that all the four-year-olds measured for this particular data point were in our program as three-year-olds. It's truly a snapshot in time that establishes our fall baseline for goal setting. I reported to you in June on two metrics. We did not have the self-regulation metric as a goal last year, but we did have the metric in phonological awareness and numbers and numerical operation. By the end of the year, we were able to see that 89% of our students met that benchmark in phonological awareness. So we exceeded our goal. And in numbers and numerical operations, it was 63%, but we aim for a minimum of 3% increase every year. The next metric that I'll be reporting on is the Kindergarten Individual Development Survey, which I've mentioned several times now, tonight, and that's called KIDS for short. It's still a relatively new measure for the state of Illinois and that's really important. The intent of this measure is, like the EDI, to inform practice and policy as it relates to serving young learners. We administer the assessment at the state minimum requirement currently of once per year. We anticipate as a district, as we become more familiar with this survey, of actually assessing or collecting this data more often throughout the year. Last year's fall data was recently released. So the slides that you're going to see next are actually the fall of 2017's data. But I wanted to show you how this will be reported. We do have a goal on our school scorecard, which is aligned to the Kindergarten Individual Development Survey. And our goal is that 80% of students, we attributed this back to the Early Childhood Center, 80% of students from a particular EC center will achieve building middle benchmark, building middle is our descriptor from the assessment, by October of their kindergarten year on all 14 required indicators. That is our internal goal. It is not the same as the state. The state actually hasn't released to us exactly what they mean when they say a student has met a benchmark. So we have kind of calibrated ourselves internally and we've done so through Kim Nelson's partnerships with other large districts in the state to create our own internal benchmarking as the state continues to work out its own. What we can see that was reported by the state is we have lots of great news to celebrate with our early childhood program. We can see that we are outpacing the state in social-emotional development. And not only the state, but far outpacing our peers in the region. And this is something that we're really proud of. We believe that a focus on social-emotional development, especially around that item with self-regulation, is critical for young learners to be successful in the academic setting. We have more good news when we look at language and literacy. While we're 3% behind the state average, we again are far outpacing our peers in the region. And we attribute this to a high-quality curriculum, high-quality planning, and very tight implementation measures due to the requirements of the grant for our early childhood program. And I'll remind the board that our program primarily serves at-risk or our most vulnerable students in the community. Our final metric here is in math and it's more good news for us. We're again outpacing the state average and we're outpacing our peers in the region. So again, this metric goes back to inform what we do in early childhood. It is not necessarily a metric for elementary schools in kindergarten because it is administered within the first 40 days of school. The next metric you're much more familiar with, you're getting to know and love, which is the NWEA Measures of Academic Progress or MAP. And as you know, we administer this assessment to all of our students, grades K through eight. I also want to keep us rooted in our school scorecard as we continue throughout the presentation. And so these are our school, or I'm sorry, these are our metrics from the school scorecard as they appear on the scorecard. The first is for both reading and math. We want to see the percentage of our students meeting their growth projection from fall to winter and fall to spring to be greater than 60%. That's the starting metric that we introduced when we adopted MAP. But we recognize that we need to grow and mature along with our understanding of MAP and how it helps us inform our decisions based on student growth projections. And so we've added Conditional Growth Index. I introduced you to the Conditional Growth Percentile briefly in June. The Conditional Growth Index is very similar. Our goal here is that we want the CGI shorthand for all subgroups by ethnicity, low income, students with IEPs and language learners to be greater than 0.5. We also want the school CGI in both reading and math from fall to winter and fall to spring to exceed 0.5 at every grade level. I'll explain a little bit about what that means. CGI is a normative growth metric. It's a standardized measure of observed student or school growth compared to the 2015 NWEA student or school growth norms. And I'm going to be intentional about this definition here before we jump into the slides to make sure we understand what CGI is. These growth norms indicate median growth levels for students or schools based on their grade, their starting RIT score, the subject in which they tested, and the amount of instructional time between the two testing events. It expresses student growth in a standard deviation unit above or below growth norms. So a CGI of zero indicates that a student showed the same amount of growth as the growth norms. That would leave us at stasis. Positive CGI scores indicate that a student's growth exceeded the growth norms. This is what we want to see. We are a district with gaps and we want to see greater than normal growth. Conversely, then, a CGI, a negative CGI, shows that a student's growth was less than the growth norms. A CGI score of 1.0 means that the student's growth is one standard deviation above the growth norm. Conversely, negative 1.0 means that a student's growth is one standard deviation below the growth norm. It allows for growth comparisons to be made between students of differing achievement levels and across grades, grades and subject areas. We've really worked with our partners with NWEA to set this target and we believe that greater than... greater than .55, or I'm sorry, .50 is a great place for us to start. I'm going to show you later in the presentation, though, why we may want to consider being even more aggressive than that in our goal setting. So our goal across the school's scorecard is greater than .5. I have these slides laid out in the same format, just grade band by grade band, subject by subject. So our first grade band here is first through third grade literacy. I want to take a moment to explain to you what you're looking at here. We are looking at cohort data. What that means is we're comparing, because we've had one testing event this school year so far, we're looking at fall-to-fall growth. And we're comparing fall-to-fall growth from the fall of 2016 to the fall of 2017, that's one interval. The second interval is fall of 2017 to fall of 2018. For example, in the first arrow, it says the first-grade cohort. Those are our first graders now, and the growth that they experience from the fall of their kindergarten year to the fall of their first grade year. Okay? So in that interval, in the fall of 2016 to fall of 2017, 36% of those students met or exceeded their growth projection. In the fall of 2017 to fall of 2018, 44% of children did. And so that's an 8% increase year over year. However, we see some declines when we look at the second-grade cohort, which is first grade to second grade, and then our third-grade cohort, second grade to third grade. There's a couple of important things to note about fall-to-fall growth. Number one, we all know, as parents and educators, that there's something that's very real called the summer slide. And that does happen, that is a real thing. However, we should also acknowledge that summer slide happens nationally for all students across the norming sample. It doesn't make us unique, but it is included in the dataset. A second thing that's really important and why I banded these together this way, usually you see them K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, is because there's a significant shift in the assessment that happens between second grade and third grade, and this is important. In the K2 growth assessment, students are provided audio support. So if they're not demonstrating a readiness to really be able to handle the reading on their own, they have, it reads the text to them through their headphones. By third grade, when we administer the 2 through 5 assessment, that audio support is gone. So while MAP can confirm that there's a national downward trend between second and third grade as a result of the assessment, we see that ours is actually slightly greater. And when we think about what a root cause of that might be, perhaps, and this is a hypothesis, part of it is because significantly more of our students are unprepared for reading at grade level independently by third grade. So this is a really large jump for our students from second grade to third grade. And part of that is the nature of the assessment itself. The second metric here for first through third grade literacy is the CGI, the Conditional Growth Index. How much more or less are our students growing in comparison to the growth norm? And you can see there's some good news and some tough news on this slide. The good news is, in that K through first grade cohort, we've decreased our negative growth. Any growth is good growth. The second piece of good news is, in the second grade cohort, actually, we've surpassed the .5 benchmark from fall to fall. Where we really get concerned is that second to third grade cohort, where our negative growth is beyond a standard deviation from the growth norm. And that's why I provided that explanation of perhaps, and again, it's a hypothesis, we see a greater drop than the growth norm because far more students, far more of our students are unprepared for reading at grade level independently by third grade. We're going to repeat here for first through third grade math. You can see that there's two positive trends and then one area of concern, and again, that is in second to third grade. As I was doing a little more research into the assessment itself, I thought, well, the audio support makes sense for literacy, but what's happening with numeracy? What's happening with numeracy is that a lot of the content of the math exam depends on grade level instruction. And we know that that's a challenge across the district. So that's again a hypothesis, that's not something I can confirm, but that is a possible explanation for growth, growth, decline between second and third grade. And again, we can look at our Conditional Growth Index, it shows exactly the same as the literacy. Reversing that negative trend in K through 1, meeting the expectation in that second grade cohort, and then areas of significant concern in grades 2 through 3. To continue on in 4th through 6th grade literacy, we're reversing this trend. We see three positive upticks year over year in cohort growth fall-to-fall. This is good news. And you can even see that our fifth grade, I'm sorry, sixth grade cohort actually surpassed the district goal of 60% by meeting it at 61. This is confirmed again by looking at the Conditional Growth Index. If I go back a slide, we went from 49% to 52%, which is good, and we celebrate all growth, but we can see that we're not hitting that .5 goal. We're not growing enough to close a gap. Yet we are meeting that .5 in the 4th through 5th grade and the 5th to 6th grade. Same story in math here. Now, this is modest. Okay, they are green arrows, they are pointing up, but you can see that 3%, 1%, 1% is a modest gain, but we celebrate all gains. Where this gets a little more difficult is looking at our Conditional Growth, which is why it's important to have more dimensions to analyze growth than just one metric. We can see that actually we're not on our way to closing gaps here. We need to be pushing harder, getting more students to exceed growth expectations. And again, I'll demonstrate that here in a few slides. To carry on this line here, we have 7th through 8th grade literacy. We are flat in the six, from 6th grade to 7th grade cohort, 57% even Stephens both years. And then we have a slight decline in 8th grade. Now, they started really close to the district goal of 59% and are at 56, and so you're going to see that in the Conditional Growth Index, that actually that cohort did meet the .5 benchmark, and we're slightly below in the 7th grade cohort. In 7th grade math, we see two slight declines, 6 to 55 and 59 to 54. And again, this is confirmed here through our Conditional Growth Index. Despite the decline, we still are meeting that .5 benchmark. So the question is often, Mrs. Duttman, how long is it going to take our students to catch up to the state average? And it's a great question. It's a great question, but our metric of 3% of students meeting or exceeding their growth projection doesn't give us the full answer. And it requires a lot of research, which we've been doing. And so we've partnered with NWEA, and they've provided some additional, hat off the presses, research that helps really give us a timeline to sketch out if a student enters at the 20th percentile, how long will it take them to demonstrate proficiency? And I will caution before I show this slide, although you have it in front of you, spoiler alert, the slide is that this was done, it says SBAC at the top, Balanced Assessment. It's very comparable to PARC, State Balanced or PARC for the most part. So while it isn't PARC, the lesson here in the slide is the same. The answer is to go from low achievement to high growth and proficiency takes years. If you look at the bottom here, you can see the third, the student started in the fall of their, I'm pointing over here because this projector is just much nicer, the third grade year began at the 20th percentile. At what rate of growth, bless you, does the student have to grow every single testing event in order to reach proficiency? And the answer in this case is the 72nd percentile. So this individual child on his or her individual report is given an achievement percentile and a growth percentile. In order to go from third grade fall to 7th grade spring, reaching proficiency on every testing event, they need to be at a minimum of the 72nd percentile for growth. That's more than just meeting your growth projection, significantly more. And what complicates this even further is it's not an easy answer to say, well, it will take X number of years, months, days, whatever increment of time we want to use, because our target changes all the time. And you can see that here. In 2014, the national percentile equivalent of proficiency was the 40th percent, 40th percentile. So this student would have been able to demonstrate proficiency at the 7, if they grew at the 72nd percentile, by spring of their fourth grade year. That's no longer the case. In 2014, the state of Illinois, this is not a criticism, they raised the bar of expectations. And so we went from the 40th percentile to the, an average of the 70th. You know from that Linking study that it varies from 68 to 76, but we'll go on average about a 70 for illustration. So that student now will not meet proficiency despite aggressive year-over-year growth until their eighth grade year. So the lesson here from this slide is it could take a really long time. The question is, whose target? And how is that target set? Right now, the state is in the final stages of procurement for our new assessment, the Illinois Assessment for Readiness. Questions we don't have answered yet are, will the state re-norm as a result of that? Presumably, but we don't know for certain. Could the national percentile level be reduced as a result of that re-norming? Possibly, but we don't know for certain. And so what's a district supposed to do? We can't necessarily rely solely and exclusively on state targets, because frankly, we don't even have set assessment dates yet, because there's an appeal in the procurement process. So we're working on that. So what do we do in the meantime to set, to put students first? And the answer that we agree to as a leadership team is putting a laser focus on aggressive growth. Because if we put a laser focus on aggressive growth and put value in that as a district, celebrating teachers every step of the way for every game, then we'll be ready for whatever the target is at any point in time. It's for us to be committed all the way through their entire, as a system, that no matter when the target changes, we're celebrating their growth all along the way. Because chances are, you know, when my son enters our district as a first grader, the target for his proficiency will absolutely not be the same by the time he reaches high school. The next logical question you might be asking is, so what are you going to do about it? Okay, so yes, all of this exists. This is the context of student achievement in our state, it's the context of student achievement in our community. What are we doing differently? Mr. Escobedo, what day of school is it today? 40? No, 30? Something like that. Yeah, I don't know, I don't have the date, I was counting on you to tell me exactly what day. Okay, all right, yeah, count it up, count it up and let me know. So what are we doing right now this year that's different? And so I'm going to highlight just a couple of things. First of all, we're ensuring tight alignment with our partners from NWEA. They are committed to 32 days of professional development in our schools this year again, and they're committed to six days of professional development for administrators. In that professional development, we want to have a tight message around goal-setting toward proficiency. Goal-setting toward proficiency has embedded within it aggressive growth targets. The second thing that we're doing is we have collected from every single PLC in every single school across the district what their goals are. This is not to bring a hammer, this is to have a systems check, a level check. Where are we in the quality of our goals? And I spoke to that a couple of weeks ago, I think you asked a question about what do we mean by alignment? And part of it was that just having the word "MAP" in a goal does not mean that it's aligned. Having a second-grade goal in a fifth-grade classroom is not aligned. Having one tiny portion of a standard represented in a goal is not aligned. And so we worked as a leadership team to define that, use it from a school as a starting point, and then refining it with multiple voices, that's continuous improvement in action. So we've collected all these goals, we're using innovative reliability to ensure that as a leadership team, we're on the same page with what we mean by high-quality goals. And then we're going to use that to inform our next steps with principals, with PLC leads, confrontation leaders, instructional coaches, Title I teachers, everyone who has an impact on the work of the PLC in the school. We also have our shift in data analysis. We are focusing on subgroups and percentile bands, and we're really excited about that. Because instead of just taking one measure of an entire school, 60% of students met or exceeded their growth, well, which, which particular students did not? That's really critical, because if they didn't this time, they're probably not going to next time. So how can we really dial in by quintile band, since our growing and which students are not? That way, we can replicate what is working and shine our flashlight and provide interventions when things are not. Secondly, we're going to turn our focus from the flat metric of percent of students who meet or exceeded their growth projections to more emphasis on Conditional Growth Index, excuse me, and Conditional Growth Percentile. And both of those are represented throughout the presentation tonight. And finally, all of these steps really represent our commitment to the trajectory from low achievement to high growth and proficiency. But it will take truly a years-long commitment to belief in the value of growth despite and other sort of existential threats really to public education. And so that's what we're really rooted in, that's what the scorecard is rooted in. 50% of our score for quality instruction, which is 70% of the scorecard, is rooted in growth. And so we are prepared to celebrate that with teachers and principals along the way. And just a quick reminder of our commitment to that and what that looks like visually, we do have 70% of our scorecard represented here in quality instruction. The other 20% recognizes that the learning environment is also important, and also the value of continuous improvement, as principals, PLCs, classroom teachers independently are working to continuously improve short-cycle goal after short-cycle goal. And most importantly, that as we're doing this work, we're really putting students at the center, is critical. By getting, by investing, and thank you, in Decision Ed as a data warehouse, it puts this kind of data at our fingertips. We're at the launch phase of it, we're in 1.0, but we've trained more than 100 people in the last two weeks. We've just asked them to really kind of shake hands with their new dashboard, get to know it, and then tell us exactly what you needed to do. And we will work with Decision Ed to customize every widget, every report. We've spent nine months validating data, because we know that to make good decisions, you have to have good data. And each of our students is represented in that data. So from all levels of our commitment here, we're putting students at the center, and we want to make sure that that goal setting really comes from them, but that we provide the district-wide structure that allows us to steer the path so that schools can then get in and row all together. And I will take questions.
I have one right off the bat, that you recently had a principal all day, was it an all-day or all-principal meeting or something about a week ago or whatever, and this was all presented to them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what was their reaction?
I think, I think it was pretty positive. We had, do you want to speak to principal feedback?
Can I interject, and I'd love to bring Dr. Bosberg in as well, but you know, one big tip, I had a chance to personally address the principals around this topic, this is a real priority for all of us. And I think the biggest point of confusion that I think we made, we've made real huge strides in addressing is the power of the relationship between growth and attainment. And I think they were, they had the courage to ask us some really good questions, because I think they were so focused on growth, which we want them to be, but I'm not sure we had taken that next step to ask, to ask that question of, okay, well, how much growth does it take for our students to attain and to hit the standard? And when the standard is as high as it is, as the PARC at 70%, which is very which is very atypical in terms of setting a, something twenty points above the national average, but that's what our state chose to do, that can be sort of demoralizing. But I thought our principals, once they understood what was being asked of them, have really started to get a sense of clarity and focus around that. This is not going to be easy work, as you can see, it's five years of work to move a student that's starting in that twentieth percentile, which is why this EDI presentation goes so nicely with this. I think you can see that the key is to not have kids start at the twentieth percentile or below because of how hard of a lift it is. That's why these are really strong companion pieces. But I just wanted to interject, the, the connection between growth and liter, and literacy and numeracy, between growth and attainment was, has been a really important insight for our principals, and I think they're really getting there. Dr. Vosberg, I'd love to hear from you as well.
I was just going to say, I, I was harkening back to DLT last night. And what I have heard in a, in a couple of different venues is that this kind of focused approach on the scorecard and on goals has provided for some really good and critical conversation about what is a good goal, what is worth our time and energy as a staff? And why would we want to move forward with poor-quality goals? And so really kind of defining through the rubric that we provided, defining through that language, and then defining through the scorecard where we're actually going is leading to higher-quality interactions with teachers.
Well, I'll just add that the work around goal-setting has been, it's been a work in progress. We started this journey a few years ago with SMART in the classroom, or actually SMART Systems, which was more of a building-level goal-setting process. And in the last two years, we really ramped up short-cycle goal-setting, which is taking the macro to the micro, is like I was going to say, because it's the classroom level that drives the whole building. And what happens with each teacher and each classroom is what's going to drive the school. So we've, we've done a lot of work in the short-cycle goal-setting in the last couple of years. So I think we're in a good position to, to make progress. In fact, I'm admiring the vibe over here with Earl and all this great glory in such a short lifecycle, but there will be stuff, I, I think very shortly at one of our schools around short-cycle goal-setting, some videos you can see, to really get a handle on what's happening at the classroom level, because it is different. And I could, I can tell the story, but it's, it's not as good as seeing it from the, the teachers and the students. So you'll see that on the vibe very soon, very soon.
Cool. Mr. Escobedo?
Yes, I don't really have any questions, just a quick comment. So my original question was really, because we use this measure significantly, at three percent growth a year, how many years will it take us to, to reach standardized test score averages? Which at this point, I still don't know that I have a good answer or even interpolation. And then the, my other comment was, yes, the, the bar changes, right? And we don't know what that's going to change. But at the same time, that's changing for everyone. So if we measure ourselves as to how soon we can reach average standardized test scores, to me, whether the bar changes or not, it's a non-issue.
So I'll, let me back up just a little bit. It's important to know where you start, too. And it's important to know how aggressive that growth needs to be. Now, this is relative, this is new for us, this study and the results of it. And I think it can help us inform those goals. And, and I hope that throughout I've been intentional in using the word aggressive growth. We want to do more than the three percent. We want to see our subgroups growing, we want to turn our attention to those quintiles. Because you're right, we should be able to keep pace, right? The question is, keep pace with whom? And which groups of students? And by being able to kind of look at our data by groups of students in comparison, it will help us make better decisions about not only our goals, but also our supports.
Other comments or questions for Mrs. Duttman? Okay, thank you. Everybody's tired. We do not have any speakers for tonight. So I don't have to go through the petitions, so if there's no further con, comments or agenda recommendations by the board, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
Sure.
Second, second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned at eight forty-eight.